Not seeing any hands and that takes us to 1.3, the CPA board forward planner. Does anyone have any questions on the forward planner? And again, I'm not seeing any hands. So that will take us to 1.4, which is the national update. And first of all, we have Ayona Mayhew on behalf of Richard McCollum. Ayona, do you want to give us your report, please? Thanks.
Thank you very much. And yes, I'll just go give a high level overview of a few different areas that have been happening at the minute. So the first one is economic transformation and the national strategy for economic transformation was published on the first of March 2022, setting out the Scottish government's vision for a fairer, greener wellbeing economy. And the strategy contains actions to deliver economic prosperity for all Scotland's people and places. A delivery plans for this setting out how the Scottish government will work with partners to implement the strategy were published on the 31st of October, along with prioritized and affordable delivery plans for each of the six transformational programs. The strategy's five policy programs of action focus on stimulating entrepreneurship, opening new markets, increasing productivity and developing the skills we need for the decade ahead, as well as ensuring fair and more equal economic opportunities. So these programs are designed to tackle long-term structural challenges and build on our economic strengths and position Scotland to maximize the greatest economic opportunities of the next 10 years. Economic modeling estimates that delivery of key components of the strategy could increase the size of the Scottish economy by at least eight billion, which is 4.9% more than it otherwise would have been in 2032. Scotland's economy is recovering and it remains above pre-pandemic levels. However, rising inflation presents an extremely challenging outlook at the minute. Yeah, the next area that I'm just going to give an overview of is mental health improvement. So the Scottish government's vision for children, young people and families in Scotland is one where good mental health and wellbeing is supported and talked about from an early age and where people have the skills to manage their own mental health and to build emotional resilience. The Scottish government want to ensure that people get the right support at the right time and in the right setting. And the program for government commits to ensuring that at least 10% of frontline health spending will be dedicated to mental health by the end of this parliament, with at least 1% directed specifically to services for children and young people. The Mental Health Transition and Recovery Plan sets out the response to the mental health effects of the pandemic, containing over 100 actions and the plan is supported by 120 million recovery and renewal fund and puts a renewed focus on prevention and early intervention. The Scottish government have provided funding to a range of children and young people's organizations, creating online resources, information and advice to support the emotional health and wellbeing of children and young people. And this includes an investment of 160,000 in work undertaken by Young Scot to build and promote the I feel online hub. The last area that I'm going to give an overview on is COVID recovery. So the COVID recovery and public service reform division has developed an outcome framework, which has been agreed with local government and other partners. The COVID recovery strategy is focused on reducing systemic inequalities, tackling poverty and supporting people most affected during the pandemic. The strategy brings together over 70 actions that will support people by increasing financial security for low income households, enhancing the wellbeing of children and young people and creating good dream, good green jobs and fair work. Since the strategy was published, the worsening cost crisis has made it even more critical to focus efforts on supporting those in need. And those most affected during the pandemic will be most affected by the ongoing cost crisis. So renewing public services so that they are focused on shared outcomes and meet the needs of people and communities across Scotland is even more important in this fiscal environment. Ongoing reform based on the Christie principles will support financially sustainable services that help improve the lives of people in Scotland and avoid the cost of failure in the future. And the Scottish government have worked closely with local government to agree the shared vision and outcomes of COVID recovery and underpin this with principles about how we will work together. Yeah, that was the main updates for me, but happy to take any questions on any of that. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that, Ayona. Questions, please. Councillor McDonald, thanks.
Thank you very much indeed. And thank you for that update. I just wanted to understand for my own clarity at the meeting and in our last national update, there was mention of final version of government plan that would be published in relation to a whole range of items. Is that the same as was outlined in the first part of that? Is that the economic transformation plan? Is that one and the same thing?
Yes. So yeah, so within the economic transformation, there's also kind of the regional plans within that. So yeah, that's the same.
Okay, that's, that's very helpful. Thank you.
Any other questions? Anybody online? I'm not seeing any hands up. Okay, I'll take it there's no further questions. Thank you very much, Ayona. That's most appreciated. Thank you very much indeed. Thanks. In that case, if we can then move on to, we have Mr. Mark McTeer here, who's the Director of Strategic Planning and Performance and Communications at the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. Mark, thank you.
Thank you very much, Chair. Good afternoon, colleagues. Before I start to say anything about what I'm going to say today, as I was driving in the city today, it kind of dawned on me, it's 30 years since I first came to Aberdeen to kind of work in love. I used to work at Robert Gordon's university for a couple of years and lived in the, in the city. So thanks very much for making me feel really old when I realized it was 30 years ago. If I'd known that, I'd maybe thought twice about coming. But having said that, what I'm here to do is set a little bit of context around where we are as Scottish Fire and Rescue Service in terms of our kind of longer term change or transformational journey. And then maybe open up space or some dialogue with partners around the table about how do we fit into that. Clearly Shea, who represents the service locally as a local senior officer, is very much core to how we're going to work in Aberdeen and indeed across the wider Graham Payne area. But how we then work nationally as a national organization to support the local is every bit as important as anything. From the outset of reform back in 2013, the strap line for the service was a national service delivered locally. And it's more than a strap line. It really matters to us as a service. The issues, the pressures that we have to confront, our community-based pressures. Therefore, partnership working is a key part of that for us about how do we respond to the risks and the challenges that we're faced with, but also the same risks and challenges invariably drive our partners. And that really runs through the core of the service and has done since 2013 when it was first created. But about two years ago, we set out a process of producing a longer term vision for the service. And it was a deliberate intent of setting out a vision that covered the decade for us. Our statutory planning process is basically a hamster wheel that we're on every three years by statute. Going back to the 2012 reform act, we have to produce a new strategic plan that meets the asks of government that's set out in the fire and rescue framework for Scotland. And while that's useful, it means you are, let's be honest, three years, a very short term cycle to be looking at. So the long-term vision, as I say, was to set out a decade view for the service, but where do we wish to go as an organization? And again, running through that very much is partnership working at the core of it. The rationale for setting out the decade-long vision was to say, look, we all know the risks in Scotland are changing. And therefore, what does it mean for us as a service? Be they population, the physical nature of our cities, towns, villages, the reshaping of the economy, that will drive different demands in us and other services going forward. Equally, the fiscal pressures, they came into sharp relief with the resource spending review environment that we're all now working in. But we've always known that fiscal pressures will be there as part of it. There's no blank checks for anyone in the public sector. How does technology change evolve and what does it mean for us? And again, what will that ultimately mean for the, not just the service, but what a firefighter does on a day-to-day basis as part of a community to safeguard them, both in a response terms, but also very much in prevention terms. Because one of the core priorities we set out in the vision was how do we enhance and further develop the prevention role of the service? Because it's great when firefighters turn up at a fire or another incident that we attend. We make an intervention, it can save a life, but very often that itself can be seen as a sign of failure. We've failed to prevent that incident occurring. So for us, there's that push into further work to drive prevention. Over the last 20 or so years, I think the service have been incredibly successful through our home fire safety business of it driving fire prevention and reducing the risk of fire in domestic premises in particular. We wanted to broaden that and take it further in terms of how do we help offset some of those wider risks that I just spoke about. So that vision was very much set in that context and we set out four strategic intents in it. One was around how our staff will be empowered and supported to be part of this kind of change process. But the two core intentions I think are of relevance to yourselves around how do we modernize, not just the service, but how do we modernize as part of public service reform across Scotland as a whole and very much at a local level, working with our CPP partners. It's very much about how do we work to build resilience within communities? And how do we work to then create the context again where that prevention agenda is taken further forward by ourselves and partners? And a key to that modernization for us is about how we use data and digital technology. How do we use data and data insight to tell us where those risks materialize, ideally at a household level, so we can begin to make more meaningful interventions at that level? I think one of the things that we found over the decades of our home fire safety work is that we are one of those public services that tends to get in behind the doors that are closed to others. And that's simply because I think of the work and the regard that the service is held in by the public. So that gives us an opportunity in terms of that prevention agenda to be able to access the hard to reach households. But we need the insight, we need the data, we need the intelligence that tells us who that is, what's the challenges of that individual household that individual may face, so that we can work in the fire safety world, but potentially also broaden that prevention agenda to work with partners in terms of what do we have to deal with when we're in that household. And the second bit is around innovation, very much a core part of our thinking about how do we begin to build a much more innovative culture within the organization and with our partners? So that the change agendas that we all know have to happen are very much embedded within the day-to-day mindset, attitude, culture of the organization, so that we can drive those agendas forward. So that's at the core of the vision. That's then also shaped our current strategic plan. We published that in October last year. And again, we've set out seven outcomes and a series of success factors for the next three years about how we're going to take that vision forward. So that's a kind of the broader kind of context for us. What it boils down to though, particularly for service delivery side of the organization, about 80% of our resource, our budget is spent on staff and of that, over 80% is spent on operational service delivery colleagues in terms of terms and conditions, salary, et cetera. So what we need to use that context of change and innovation around is to rethink the role of service delivery. Both our whole-time crews, such as you have in Aberdeen, but also our on-call colleagues across much of rural and island Scotland as well. So what does that broad vision of the future of the next decade really mean in terms of a city such as Aberdeen or in rural communities and islands across the country? And how do we evolve and continue to evolve the service to meet the particular needs of Aberdeen? Not just the national picture that I can sit in HQ and look at at any point in time. How do we now evolve that in different urban and rural and village contexts across the country? What does it mean for the response model? That traditional image that people have of the fire service, the bells go, the trucks go, we arrive, we do what we do, hopefully to safeguard and get people safe, but more importantly, the prevention agenda, I will keep coming back to that. How do we deepen our offer to communities around prevention? And how do we use unique skills of firefighters and also that presence that we can have within a community to help engage with them on that wider prevention agenda? For all of that to work, we need to agree different terms and conditions for our employees or firefighters. As you will all know from the press, we have made a pay offer through the National Joint Council. We nationally negotiated the UK level paying terms and conditions for firefighters. So we have an offer out at the moment, the union are balloting, we'll know by the third of March whether they've accepted the current pay offer. Or in assumption we get settlement on that, that next phase for us is around how do we develop that role of a firefighter further? That pay offer is linked very much to the current terms and conditions of what a firefighter can and cannot do. And we wish to have that dialogue with our union partners about, well, what's the next evolution of that? How do we take that vision, not just as a strategy for the service, but into the day-to-day working terms and conditions for a firefighter in a way that's meaningful for a firefighter and also gives them then at least a degree of certainty of what their job is going to be into the future within the service and indeed to say across our partnerships. And within all of that, there are probably four things to take away from it. As a service, we want to evolve, we want to keep changing, we want to be innovative, but we want to do that on a partnership basis. Because the risks and demands that drive us are the same risks and demands that drive every partner body around about the table. Therefore, how do we work together on that is endemic throughout that vision. Critical component is around data. We have our own data that gives us a level of insight. We need to share some of that data with partners, both locally and nationally, and use that shared intelligence to build insights so that we can begin to target where those resources are going to have the most effect, particularly again on the prevention agenda. And working with that around predictive modeling is something we'd be keen to open up, something we've begun to explore as a service. It's useful knowing what the picture is today, what's going to be the picture next year and the year after and the year after and the year after. So working around that data, sharing, intelligence gathering and insight is going to be of value to us and hopefully to yourself. What does that mean? Not just in terms of the redesign of our services, but the collective service that we are part of within Aberdeen and other places across the country. So that place agenda is very much still a core part of who we are and what we will be going forward. And then also for us in terms of governance, it's how we use all that insight at a board level for us in terms of the national board to drive decision-making in ways allow us to flex as an organization to meet the different needs across the country. Because there is no one model fits all in Scotland. But as a national service, yes, there are national demands and national asks, national pressures, but we have to have the flexibility and agility to meet that in particular communities, whether that's Aberdeen or whether it's Glasgow or whether it's in the Western Isles. And therefore, all of that insight and partnership working is to help steer our board in a ways in which they can make national decisions that work locally in different communities across the country. So that's where we are as a service at a national level and to say Shea's here locally to lead that on our behalf. And what we'd be looking to do is to play part, not just what can you do for us in terms of Aberdeen into the fire service, but what can we do as a national fire service that helps support your own local agenda? Because much of those themes, I'm assuming will be local themes as well. It's not just unique to the fire service. It's the same issues, it's the same challenges, it's the same households who need our support. So how do we work together as partners to take that forward? So it's a two-way ask. What can we offer you? What can you offer us? And again, I'm assuming there'll be a mutual benefit for us and for the citizens of Aberdeen as a consequence. I'm going to halt at that, Chair. And if there's any questions or points from colleagues, I'm happy to take, take that.
I'm going to jump in first. It's the good thing about being Chair, you can. I was very interested to hear what you were saying there about digital transformation. Because, you know, we as a council organization have been going through a huge digital transformation, especially with how we interact with our partners. And of course, the first thing we always run into is we all have different systems. And getting those systems to necessarily communicate and establish communication systems between partner organizations can be a little bit of a challenge at times. And how do you really feel, you know, you're at a national level, coming to us at a more local level? How do you feel that transition period is going? And do you foresee any issues on that journey? Because, you know, obviously data is often key in the kind of work that we are doing here. And the ability to share that data is key as well. I wonder if there's some commentary in around that.
Yeah, of course. And I mean, I think in terms of the systems, it would be nice if we could all converge on similar systems. Where we all are at the moment in terms of suppliers for different systems complicates it. I might be coming up for contract renewal, but your contract's not up for five years. Therefore, the ability to converge and say, let's go for a common system can be challenging. But I think that's something that's worth still exploring, I think, as partners, both locally and nationally. Is there a common set of platforms internally within the service? We publish the business intelligence strategy. And over the four years of that plan, what we want to do is to converge our own technology, strip out some redundant technology, deal with the issues of digital debt within the organization and then have a smaller palette of systems that we operate in, operate within. And again, I think there's conversations we could probably have with Aberdeen and others as part of that. But more importantly, it's not so much the system, it's the ability to share data around about the system. How we can export, share, match and bring data together is probably of more value than getting ourselves onto common platforms and common system. And I think there's things we can certainly do in that regard. Data governance is part of it, but it's not a barrier in itself. There is a way through some of the issues of data sharing and data challenges that we've got, if there's a will to do so. And certainly my experience, not just in the fire service, but in the kind of last 15, 20 years in public services, is getting the will to find a way through it. There are some proper safeguards and procedures around GDPR, et cetera, for the sharing of data. And I would not want to breach any of them because I think they're there for good reason, but they are not a barrier. They can be repurposed as a means to help us share data in a safe and controlled fashion. And if we can do that, that gives us an ability to then begin to build the insight from that data and then begin to target resources as I say, for greater effect going forward. So again, as an offer to yourself, that's something we're up for a conversation on and see how we can help support you and vice versa. You could support us in taking that forward because I think for us, we see that as vital, to that ability to flex in a more agile fashion to deal with the different needs in communities across Scotland.
I'm seeing some nodding heads around the room, so I'm sure we'll take you up on that. I'll open it to questions. Councillor Greg, thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. McTeer, for the presentation. It was really positive, really encouraging to hear the very strong vision that the Fire and Rescue Service have. And it was going through my mind that it would be perhaps useful for us to know, perhaps in more specific terms, what can the CPA Aberdeen Board do for the, for the fire service? I mean, we've heard mention of data sharing, I mean, that, that data sharing, maybe sharing analysis and so forth. I think that that's surely an area for greater collaboration, which will, which I think will benefit everyone, which will benefit all of the partners. So maybe, maybe it would be useful to have an understanding of, you know, what can we do for you? So that we can develop, you know, we're looking to evolve the partnership here as well. So just some feedback, I think going, I think continuing that conversation will be, will be really helpful to get to the, to the specifics.
I think one of the other things for us would be helpful, particularly at a national level to understand is, you know, where does the city go in terms of its own service design, either as individual partners or collectively as a partnership? Because as we rethink what's the future shape of the fire service over the next decade and what do we have to do? We also have to be mindful of what other public service bodies are doing as well. So being able to understand where it is you're going, what are your kind of journeys as partners across Aberdeen helps us again make sure that we can fit into that. Because I sit at a national headquarters in Canva land outside of Glasgow. With the best will in the world, I can't know everything about what's going on everywhere in Scotland. But there's a tendency in national bodies to maybe look at it as a national picture. What I need to be able to do is to work to support Shea as the local representative of the organization that then helps us blend in with where Aberdeen goes and vice versa. So so not just in terms of sharing data, but as I say, what's the thoughts, what's the plans, where are you going? What does it mean in terms of future shape of services? And where do we fit in is going to be very much, I think, part of for us, that ability to over on that vision.
That, that's great. Yeah, I completely agree with you on that. I think that all the partners would share that desire for the prevention agenda that you are highlighting. And there are surely ways of working together operationally, health, council, police, where we can develop that prevention agenda. So.
I mean, I think in terms of the operational side, if we move just beyond then just simply the prevention, if you think about it in response terms, one of the other things that we will all be looking at, given the context that we're now operating in as our asset base, our property base. And again, understanding what partners are thinking in terms of their future asset base and footprint across localities will be important for us as well. Because the last thing we want is to miss opportunities as we rethink what's the shape of our estate into the future. So, you know, we all think of a fire station as a fire station, but there are options around about the future design of buildings that would allow us to integrate other services or us integrated with other services in terms of the property portfolio. And again, I think having some further insight into the conversation around that would be really important for us. Because we don't want to make decisions at a national level, again, that don't fit in with where you go locally and vice versa. So to ensure that that convergence in systems, but potentially also beyond that service design, service property portfolios, et cetera. That convergence agenda, I think, is where the value of community planning can really come into its own for us.
Many thanks. I think there will be surely many opportunities, for example, joint training, you know, where, where there could be shared, shared activities. Thanks for that. That's much appreciated.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor McDonald, thanks.
Thank you very much. And my question's really maybe around workforce planning and, and just the demographics of the workforce, just maybe to get an understanding if there is, if there are issues around retaining and recruiting staff and, and just how the service is going to tackle, you know, the equalities agenda in terms of getting more women and ethnic minorities involved in, in the service going forward. And secondly, I mean, the service is not just around fire, isn't it? I mean, it's, you know, road traffic accidents and all the rest, all the other different aspects of the service working in conjunction with NHS, ambulance, police and all the rest of it. So, you know, just, you know, just to understand a little bit more, or for the public to understand and to understand at a local level, some of that, because there has been a reduction thankfully and, and an improved performance in road safety. And I suppose my last point is around governance and about, it's always that difficult dichotomy between being accountable at a national level to ministers, but also being accountable to, you know, the person on the street to whom, you know, they see a service that has had a history of being very embedded in, in the local area. And when it's elevated sometimes to a national body, that, sometimes those relationships are stretched and it's about how, how it really, rather than just having the slogan, but it really works. And I think the fire service has more than others managed to really, to do that and be seen still very locally, certainly here in Aberdeen. And it was just how, how that can be maintained and, and how local voices can shape that national agenda, which I know is part of what you're, you're here today. But it was, it was really those three points.
Of course, in terms of workforce planning, it's something again, we've, we've looked at as an organization and certainly within our vision, we've set it as a priority, the diversification of the workforce. We are an overwhelmingly white, male, middle-aged organization. Our statistics are quite stark when you look at it. And it's something that we recognize we need to change now. It's something we've been working hard as a service, not just since the creation of the Scottish Service, but going back to our predecessor services. And it's ongoing work we have to do, you know, there are social views of what a firefighter is that sometimes work against that diversity agenda, but that's not an excuse for not pushing it further. And it's something we discussed earlier, well, late last year rather, with our board about our plans around how do we diversify the workforce? So that we look and feel more like our communities, but not just for the sake of it. It's about having therefore diversity of insight, diversity of experience and diversity of perspective. Because the danger is if we all look and sound alike, we all end up thinking alike and that's not a good thing for any organization. So it's genuine to ensure that we mean relevant to our communities. That's why diversity is important for us. And it's something that we've begun to have a kind of hard look at in discussions with our union colleagues as well about what more do we need to do to break down those perceptions about what a firefighter actually is? And therefore, who should become a firefighter into the future? Because that's also going to be, I think, going back to the broader agenda, important for us around diversification. We need different types of people to fulfill what are going to be very different types of jobs into the future. And therefore, making sure we can diversify the workforce throughout that period is going to be important. And again, if there's anything that other local partners are doing similar to that, because I know, for example, in NHS colleagues, if you look at nursing, they've got the opposite social perception. It's a female employment. And therefore, what have they done? Because they've been more successful over the last couple of decades about diversification in terms of the nursing labor force. So there's lessons for us to learn, I think, in that as well. So again, partners would be happy to have a conversation on it. Your points around governance and voice, I think, are equally important. We set out a national strategic plan, say we published it in October last year. That triggers for Shea locally, a review of the current local plan. And then we will recast that local plan later this year and that'll come back to the local scrutiny committee for some discussion. The guidance that we've given over the last two iterations of local plans to Shea and his colleagues is alignment, not just with this national strategic plan, but alignment with the Lloyd. It's very much part of our thinking that we have to be part of the Lloyd and show the relevance of the national into the local through the local plan. And certainly, as we go through that process of review and then recasting the local plan, we will be out for consultation across communities. And again, the ask of Shea and colleagues elsewhere in Scotland is bring that insight and intelligence from communities back into the center. So use it to reshape the local plan. So use it to reshape the local plan, but tell us what are the themes and issues? And then we can analyse at a national level to make sure that we can position ourselves to reflect the needs of local communities through that. So that, that channel from local back up to national is absolutely vital for us. As I say, I can't sit in canvas line and double guess everything from Wick to Dumfries and understand what's going on. We need those local channels playing back into the national so that we get it right at the national to support the local and vice versa.
Thank you very much. Next, I've got Michelle.
Thank you, Mark. I was just going to come back on your kind of offer of working more closely together. And I wondered if we could maybe do a bit of a deep dive around how the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service are playing into community planning in the city. I was thinking specifically about your offer about looking at our data system. So we do have an outcomes framework for community plan in Aberdeen. And it would be great actually to test how Scottish Fire and Rescue Service can play into that a bit more, bringing in some of your data so that we can look at that as part of our population needs assessment, how we use that to craft our, our shared priorities. And then also just having a look, closer look at how Scottish Fire and Rescue Service are playing into our improvement projects within the LOIP at the moment. So there's good practice there that the service have brought in terms of just think about some of the improvement activity around reducing the false callouts to our high-rise buildings in the city and the work that you've done to engage communities. So just wondering if it would be good just to take stock of some of that innovations that you've been talking about and how we can maybe test some of that practice in the city, if it's happening elsewhere in Scotland? Thinking things like carrying the lock zone, as you say, moving away from that traditional service and how we can maybe just build on that within the city.
Absolutely. And again, you know, I'll, I'll be led by Shea in that in terms of local presence in the city. But, you know, one of the other things that my team is doing at the moment is that we're gathering, not just from Aberdeen, but elsewhere across Scotland, those local practice examples. What works, to go back to an old phrase, but then how do you then make that work in other parts of the country simultaneously? So there are things that we can bring through that into Aberdeen. You know, you mentioned the lock zone as one of the recent developments, but there are others as well across the country where we have get different initiatives, working with different partners. And certainly I'd be more than happy to share some of that going forward. And your, your general offer around data, yeah, let's talk about after the meeting today, where do we take that forward? And again, I can task my team in terms of how do we play into that? We tend to focus very much on the national level when it comes to sharing data and analysis and insight. You know, get partners in Police Scotland that we work very closely in that regard. But I think having that similar kind of sharing of insight and intelligence at a local level will be valuable to us as well. Because again, we have to be present where the demand and the pressures are. And that's where people live, that's in households, that's in communities. So the more we know and understand about that level, then the better we are placed. But I think there's insight that we can help bring locally to some of that as well.
Thank you. Any further questions? Luanne, thanks.
You're sorry, I'm behind you. Yeah, really interested to hear the approach that's being taken. And I just wondered maybe for Shea, whether you're connected in with Aberdeen City Health and Social Care Partnership, who we've, we've just been selected to be part of a pathfinder around getting it right for everyone. So taking the children's principles and wrapping it around families with complex care. So I don't know if you've, if you've been aware of that or if you're connected in yet, Shea.
Yeah, I'm aware of it and we are starting to get connected in, but happy to take that conversation deeper if we've got to.
Thank you. Sorry, I can't see. Sorry.
Hi, so I work with Skills Development Scotland. So from what you were saying, it sounds like skills is going to be very much at the heart of what you do as well. When you talk about things like innovation and change, really, really interesting. So I don't know if you're connecting in with some of my national colleagues around skills. Because I think obviously as a national employer, I think you could be a, an employer who kind of leads on this and that in terms of that skills transformation. So it'd be good to connect around that.
Thanks for that. For my sins, I sit in a body called the Community Planning Improvement Board, which is like in a national body that's been created to help coordinate support into local CPPs and certainly get colleagues from Skills Development Scotland as part of that board. So yeah, I can pick up with them. Because I think you're right, there are things that we can do as a national employer that might be of interest and value in terms of developing things, but equally through that learning from others as well. Because as I say, for us, it's always a two-way street.
On you go.
Hi, I'm Rachel Thompson. I work for the Health and Social Care Partnership, part of the Public Health Team. And I think MEOC is also possibly something. I'm just wondering, is that something that your officers are kind of trained to use? That's making every opportunity count, is conversations with people in the community?
Yes and no would be an answer to that one, if I'm being honest. And certainly one of the things that we are, through our approach to prevention in a household. So traditionally, we've called it a home fire safety visit. We're trying to broaden that out, to always look at the risks that come back to the fire risk at the moment. But as part of that, as, as we launch a project that we're currently calling Safe and Well, what we want to do is to be able to passport people to things. So when we go into a house at the moment, firefighters are trained in, for example, spot signs of dementia, spot signs of domestic abuse. And to be able to in an appropriate fashion, open up a conversation. Now, they cannot resolve those problems in the household, but if part of that conversation helps someone towards the services that can, then that's something that we're keen to kind of continue to develop. It's something we've been doing, as I say, for a number of years, but we want to broaden that out and make sure that firefighters are appropriately skilled and trained to pick up the signs and then pick up the conversation with people. So very much, and again, if there's anything we can follow on from the day around that, we, I'm sure we'll be happy to, to have that conversation.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any more hands and I'm not seeing any hands on the board, which I struggle to see at times, I must admit, but thank you very much indeed, Mark. As regards your opening question about feeling old, I know how you're feeling. Today is my son's 21st birthday and I wonder how he managed that.
How did that happen?
I'm still in my late twenties in my brain, but there you go. No, that was really informative and I think it does show how we can actually take things offline that helps everybody in, in the various organisations that are represented here. So thank you very much indeed for coming along today. Thank you. If I can now move on with your indulgence, I would like to swap around the agenda a little bit. We have Eleanor Shepherd is unable to attend today, but Graham Simpson has managed to step in for her. And he will actually take 2.8 and 2.9, if we can take them next. Because Graham has other commitments later this afternoon. And after that, I would like to go to 2.5 and then we'll return to the agenda if, if we can all agree that. Can we agree that? I'm seeing nodding heads. Over to you, Graham, for the paper at 2.8, which is at pages 169 to 174. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair, for your, for your indulgence on this matter. This first paper provides the board with an, an update on the planning that is ongoing in relation to the incorporation of the United Nations Rights for the Child into Scots law and its implications for the ongoing work in relation to child-friendly cities. The, we are anticipating the implication of this to come into effect during 2023. And it is going to have undoubtedly significant impact on the work across all public authorities, including health boards and the local authority as well. This very much sets a high standard that we all have to aspire to. And it's important that we have a laser focus on ensuring that we are doing all that is required to deliver on the statutory duties in relation to the rights for the child. And thinking about that, we, we are, we are mindful of the impact and, and interface with the UN's, that our child-friendly city ongoing work, of which there is an updated assessment as to progress in attached to the papers. However, we, we believe it is appropriate at this point in time just to maybe pause that whilst we do further work in relation to scoping out and fully understanding what the implications of the UNCRC bill will be for us as a local authority and indeed for our partners as well. And so therefore, I'm here on behalf of the partnership just to ask for, for just that we make, make that pause, to ask that we are instructed to come back with, with the implications once the statutory guidance is published. And then to ensure that the, the work that we are driving forward at pace to refresh our Children's Services Plan for 2326, fully embeds the UNCRC throughout that plan as we take it forward and we will consult on that over the coming six weeks. Happy to answer any questions, Chair, on, on the attached.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Mr. Simpson? Counselor McDonald, thanks.
Thanks. I, I maybe missed what you said, Mr. Simpson. What, when is the guidance from the Scottish Government likely to be published?
We're anticipating that being published in the first half of 2023.
Can I ask you through, through the convener, what, what would, what are the major considerations in, in pausing? As you say, and then coming back to it, is it, it's just not putting the cart before the horse? Or, or would, would some of the, the work not be relevant once the guidance comes out? I'm, I'm just trying to understand the, the, the implications.
Thank you, Chair, through yourself. The, the implications are that I think we don't want to be distracted from, from this work. I think this is really, really critical. I think there will be crossover, but actually I think the, the focus on delivering on the bill actually sets a higher standard of aspiration for actually delivering on the rights for children. And I think it's really important we have that focus as well, taking that forward. It is also to ensure we, as you say, we're not putting the cart before the horse, that we're absolutely understanding that. I think as a local authority and as a, as other public bodies, the ask of the, of the legislation will be, will be more than what we're being asked for by the, by the child-friendly city accreditation process. And whilst we want to still, still take that into account, we, we don't want to be distracted as we, we plan for and take account of the legislative requirements that will fall upon us.
Thank you. That, that's helpful. And do we know, and I don't know if you know the answer to this question, do we know if there will be, you know, equivalent funding that comes along to help us to achieve what is going to be asked of us?
Again, through your chair, as yourself, Chair, at this point in time, there isn't any indication of a funding settlement that will be attached to the bill when it's, when it's, when it's enacted. That may come, but we will, will, will report on that in the update that we bring back to this board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions for Mr. Simpson? Not seeing any hands. In that case, there are three recommendations at page 173. Can we agree the recommendations? Thank you. And if we can now go to page, well, 2.9, page 177 onwards. And again, back to you, Mr. Simpson.
Thank you, Chair. Before the board this afternoon is an update in relation to improvement 5.1 in relation to the number of children, young people with an eating disorder who identified within three months of onset is increased by 50% by 2023. The update sets out challenges around this, particularly around our data collection in, in relation to this. But also it's also highlighting the potential unintended consequences of a focus on this element, on this issue. And we want to ensure that we're doing all we can to, to intervene early and have a focus. But recognizing also that actually the, the diagnosis of a eating disorder is, sits within a clinical setting. And, and it be for, within that setting that such is, is highlighted. By no means is this a walking away. We very much want to ensure that the mental health and wellbeing of our young people is, is fully considered. And, and we, we will do that through both through the evaluating the outcome of the SHINE survey, but also in the work that is ongoing in relation to the refresh of the Children's Services Plan. And, and this work will very much focus and, and have a core part of, of that plan when it is finalised in the coming weeks by the end of March. We would also want to ensure that, that the work plan that actually sits alongside the Children's Services Plan will actually be really driving forward this mental health of our young people, which has been informed by the collaborative of young people who have shared their views, which was established in October and will run as an ongoing activity as we ensure that we are listening to and acting on the voices of our young people in relation to their mental health concerns going forward. So it's asking for the board's approval that, that we actually agree that this aim is, is removed from the LOIP, but actually that we would consider it's part of the ongoing development, the mental health and wellbeing is part of the ongoing development of the Children's Services Plan, which will add into the LOIP at the appropriate time in the future.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Questions? Counselor Greg?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I wanted to ask about the survey and the, the findings relating to body image. Were there particular disparities between boys and girls? There's mention there of girls. I think it's important to, to, to be aware of that distinction from the survey in the past so that as we move forward, we're, we're still very much focused on, on any, on any particular help that's required for boys and for girls.
Through your, through yourself, Chair. Thank you, Counselor. You're right, right, the, the, the survey did highlight a disparity in girls identifying body image as an issue. We also have to be mindful however, that developmentally, girls mature at a quicker rate than boys. I see that carefully. And, and recognizing that actually boys may be at a different point in terms of articulating their own, their own needs and vulnerabilities as well. So it's also recognizing that boys will often express their mental health difficulties in different ways. But body image may still be an, an issue for them, which manifests itself in different formats, whether that's physical aggression or whether that's other forms of harmful behaviour that we, we may see. So I think it is important to really recognize that, that this is something that girls have predominantly, but not exclusively flagged. But it's also then not just dismissing this as being an issue for boys, but it just may be manifesting itself in different ways. I hope that's helpful, Counselor.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counselor McDonald, thanks.
Thank you. And, and, and I don't have any issues with the, the direction of travel that we're, we're going. But I just wondered if there were any lessons that we could learn from, 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 from data and how we use it and, and, and where we get it from and so on. And I think, you know, I don't know whether to say it is a good catch that we've seen this and we're, we're changing direction or, or, or maybe to look a little bit deeper into, you know, in the data that did come from CAMHS and, and so on, just to make sure that, you know, we can, we can, we can learn from, from this, which is, which is, you know, a positive, not, not a negative way of looking at it.
Thank you, Chair, through yourself. Thank you for that question, Counselor. Yes, there is lessons to be learnt here without a shadow of a doubt. And I think that's recognized within the report that we need to be absolutely clear on our data before articulating an improvement aim and being clear that our data is, is bust, robust, or beg your pardon. I think it's also important that we, we ensure that actually we work together to share that data and, and how it's formed and that whilst the CAMHS data is an important component, it's not the sole component. It's joined up with data that, for example, has been highlighted through the SHINE survey or indeed other data that's been held by other, other agencies as well. So it's about seeing that in a holistic sense as well, Counselor. But yes, you're absolutely right to say that there are lessons here to be learnt.
Thank you very much for that. Luanne, saw your hand. Thanks.
Thanks. So yeah, two questions from me. I totally understand the, the rationale here and I'm really pleased to hear Graham say that this is not walking away, but it's actually just making sure we're, we're looking at the right things. I just wondered, just given everything that's going on, there isn't any time scale for when that might come back as a LOIP priority. And I wondered if, you know, just to get a sense of what that would be. Because I worry that we, we don't want to lose sight of this. It's really important. And second point is maybe similar to Counselor McDonald's points. I just wondered if all our LOIP improvement aims have had a relook just to sense check that there's not this kind of issue sitting elsewhere in our LOIP, which is probably not for Graham to answer. But there are my two questions.
Chair, so yourself, thank you, Luanne, for that question. In relation to the first part, that the Children's Services Plan, it's in its final stages and it will go out to consultation in, in the coming week. We believe that the action plan that will help deliver the Children's Services Plan will form the children and families component of the next iteration of the LOIP going forward. We have got data very much at the heart of the Children's Services Plan, so try to pick up the learning from this point. So I think it will be for the board will be able to see that Children's Services statutory plan, which needs to be approved by both the council and by the Health Board in the coming six weeks or so. And that will allow us to sort of have a clear focus moving forward on how we continue to support the mental health and wellbeing of our children and young people. And I'll leave Alison and/or Michelle to answer your second question, Luanne.
Thank you very much for that. I think, Michelle, are you going to take it? Thanks.
Yes, as Graham said, the Children's Services Plan will allow us to refresh that LOIP immediately. So that'll be the recommendation to the board to accept those and that refresh to the LOIP. As we monitor all of our improvement projects, there are occasions where we'll find that there is that kind of overlap and requirement to take account of synergies. So that's something we just continue to manage through that improvement programme. The plan for refreshing our LOIP whole scale, the timescale for that will be next year. So we'll start to take stock of where we are with all of our improvement projects towards the end of the year, which was really the timescale for most of our shorter term improvement aims that are within the LOIP. So that'll allow us to do that similar learning in advance of a refresh of the LOIP. But it's something that we just need to handle as we go and we do that through our reporting and our project teams.
Thank you very much for that. Rachel, you've got a question. Oh, Nick, um.
I guess there's been a lot of mention about data and my thoughts around forecasting, there's going to be a lot of change over the next few years. Sometimes there might not be the data there. So I guess that's just where I would like to know where that consideration is. I think the lived stories will help with that forecasting, you know, it'll bring into the fore the sort of issues, you know, that young people are facing maybe. So I'm just wondering what's happening around that. Thank you.
No problem. Graham, do you want to try and take that one?
Thank you, Chair. Nice, straightforward question. So you're absolutely right, Rachel, that data comes in different formats. It's both the quantitative but also the qualitative data. And we shouldn't get away from focusing on one. We have to have a balance of both. Absolutely. In terms of the Children's Services Plan, we are required to ensure that the voice of children and young people and their families is influencing the shape of that. And we only commend doing that by gathering their stories and putting them as we continue to review that plan on an ongoing basis. We are required to report on the progress of delivering on the Children's Services Plan on an annually, on an annual basis, but also use that, that reporting as an opportunity to take a fresh look. Do we still have the right priorities in front of us? And recognizing that actually we may need to be agile in how we respond to ensuring that that plan remains current and responsive to the needs of children, young people and their families, using both quantitative and qualitative data.
Thank you very much. I'm not seeing any more hands around the room, so I'm assuming that there aren't any more questions. In that case, the recommendation for action is on page 179. Can we agree? Agreed. Thank you very much. In that case, we'll now revert to the last of the papers I've asked to take out of order, which is 2.5, Project End 7.1, Increase the Number of Accredited Courses Directly Associated with Growth Areas by 7% by 2023. And we have Mark Jones to speak to the paper. Over to you, Mark.
Thank you, Chair. I'm pleased to be able to bring before you the project end report for the 7.1 redesign of the senior phase, which was to increase the number of accredited courses directly associated with growth areas by 7% by 2023. I commend the detail contained in pages, I think it's 91 to 151. And rather than comment in detail, simply summarize a few key points and talk about completion and suggested next steps. Although I wasn't in my current role when the project commenced, it's clear that this area was and continues to be crucial in our aim that Aberdeen becomes a place where all people can prosper and for me, all young people in particular. Going back three years and more, it'd be fair to say that there was a significant task in developing the curriculum across secondary schools in Aberdeen, not least in the senior phase, that's S4, 5 and 6. There was a legacy of a traditional set of courses that met the needs of some of our young people, but perhaps not always all. The changes introduced by this project supported some work already commenced and some work not yet started to encourage a focus on new courses that aligned growth to growth sector areas through work on pathway awareness, through lift off events, creation of easily accessible information on these pathways through the introduction of an ABZ Works website and through increased focus on skills in partnership with Skills Development Scotland. By around the midpoint of last session, it became clear that the target of 7% had actually been overtaken, in part through the work described in the report you have before you. However, this is absolutely just a start. The changes that have been tested to date are now embedded as business as usual. As well as embedding these changes, a major new initiative is to be launched in June 2023 called ABZ Campus, which is to support the improvement achieved to date to further develop a link between curriculum and growth sector industries in Aberdeen City and to enhance and deepen partnership working with further higher education and local industry. Approximately 40 courses will be offered through a bespoke application portal with partnership engagement from Skills Development Scotland, North East Scotland College and a range of other delivery partners. This launch will be a continued sign of improvement with strategic plans already forming around the further developments for Phase Two in 2024-25. This will include further developing employability places, creating hub localities and beginning to create a regional offer in collaboration with partners in Aberdeenshire Council. Recently, we just launched ABZ Campus Family Information Event and we were talking about quantitative data. We had 1,400 hits in the space of 48 hours, which was really pleasing. In closing, ABZ Campus is a collective initiative of schools and partners, which you'll see from the report. Content is both exciting and potentially really impactful. However, there's also been an imperative alongside this for schools to examine their own individual offers of curriculum. And again, for the current session, it's evident that progress is being made in this regard also. I commend the detail of this project end report to you and the recommendations contained at the end of the report. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. I was going to take the first question again. You've obviously outlined a very successful outcome. And I suppose, and I mean this as a critical friend, have we stretched ourselves far enough given the positive report you've just given us? Or should we have maybe stretched ourselves a little bit further? Wonder if you can just give us some commentary around that, because it's always difficult when we're setting targets for ourselves, you know, to know just how far are we going? Can we remain realistic in our targets? Just some commentary would be helpful. Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. I think, I think that's true. Again, I wasn't here when the project commenced and it's always hard to know how ambitious to be. But certainly, certainly it was a surprise to me to learn that we made the kind of progress that we had done. And that suggests to me that this continues to be an area that we really need to focus on. Just as an example, in terms of some data, in 2021-22, there were 391 National Progression Awards being offered by Aberdeen, the 11 Aberdeen City Schools. This session, it's scheduled to be over 800, but that's still not enough and doesn't get us to where we need to get to. So if we're measuring in increments of 7%, that really tells you what you need to know. So good question and thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional questions? I've got councillor McDonald. I saw your hand first and then councillor Greg. Thanks.
Thanks. I do had an ambitious enough question, Mark, but my second one was more around the spread across Aberdeen. And, you know, whilst it's good to have that across the board, you know, maybe just to get a little bit more insight into where the pockets are that need a bit more help, because there will be, to get that average, there will be those that are better and those that are maybe not so, so good. Although, you know, all going in the right direction.
Thank you. And through yourself, Chair, the ABZ Campus initiative is 11 schools working together. So essentially, that's all 11 schools aligning their senior phase columns so that irrespective of what school that you belong to, you can actually attend one of these courses, which is delivered in seven or eight different locations. The unintended, but sometimes the unintended consequences can be really quite exciting as well. What that means is we essentially have a potential for a clearing system. So if you have a school such as Hazelhead Academy, who have four or five spaces in a higher class, that means that somebody from Lochside or Aberdeen Grammar School or Northfield Academy could also access those places if they remain open. And for me, that's an additional slightly unintended but exciting consequence as well.
Thank you. Councillor Greg?
Thanks. Thanks, Chair. I think it was more or less in relation to the question that you had. I was wondering, what would the role of community planning partners be in driving improvement and pushing the target forward? I suspect that it's been possible to achieve the success thanks to the involvement of partners. Therefore, making sure that we still have aspirations to go beyond the availability and the number of accredited courses, you know, maybe there's a role for us to work together to push that target.
Alison, do you want to come back on that one?
In response to councillor Greg, as you heard from Mr Simpson earlier today, they're currently drafting the revised Children's Services Plan. And as part of that process, they will be reviewing the current LOIP projects, but also therefore looking at the aims that we currently have and looking at further multi-agency improvement aims that can be included in that revised Children's Services Plan.
Thank you very much. I've got councillor Radley.
It's just to build on councillor McDonald's question. Obviously, we've got a total number of courses available and a total number of available student places, but it's to understand where the spread of those students are coming from. Is there sort of equal access for all of the schools and is that being taken up by all of the schools as well?
Thank you. And through yourself, Chair. So the anticipation here is that the choice process hasn't yet started for ABZ Campus. We think there's around 1,000 places that are available. We've opened up the spaces for our HNC offer, which has to necessarily take place early due to collaboration with North East Scotland College. The allocation of ABZ Campus spaces is based on progress made in a similar subject up till now, not based on location. And so that would not be a factor. One of the things that's been made really clear and it is distinct from the previous city campus model, is that an ABZ campus course is basically homeless in that it doesn't, it may exist within a particular school, but it's for the good of all rather than for the good of one.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? I'm not, oh, councillor McDonald. Thanks.
It's just to perhaps following on from that, and there will be mechanisms, I'm sure, to recognize dropout rates and things like that and to make sure that we are getting it right.
Yeah, I can answer that, Chair. Thank you. Two things. First of all, I think one of the interesting and important things we've done in the last few weeks has been to take some pupil voice and gauge some views from people who experienced the city campus offer. And what they've told us very clearly is that we need to do better in relation to encouraging a sense of comfort and taking a course in a place that you might not have been so familiar with. So there's a plan for an open afternoon twilight session where young people can go and visit the place that they're going to take the course in a few weeks' time. And I guess the other update is that we are procuring a portal service, which will allow us to measure very clearly what the dropout rate is and what the reasons for that dropout would be. And that's something we want to keep a really close eye on.
Thank you very much for that. Not seeing any other hands. There are three recommendations at page 97. The one I'm going to look forward to is the third one, to note that the dataset for the overall aim will continue to be reported via the Improvement Programme dashboard to ensure that progress is monitored. I think that's something we're all going to be looking forward to seeing, because that's definitely a good news story. Can we agree the recommendations, please? Thank you very much indeed. Moving on then, we'll go back to 2.1, which was the CPA Improvement Programme Quarterly Update and Appendices. Now, there are two appendices. So if we can, first of all, if I can ask Alison for an overview. Thanks.
Thanks, Chair. Appendix one, members have the overview of progress of our LOIP improvement aims. So you can see there that overall 21 of our projects have now achieved their aims with eight project end reports approved and a further five on today's agenda. As members will be aware, our improvement projects cover between 2022 and 2023. So I just wanted to highlight in respect of our 2022 aims. So we had 20 improvement aims to be achieved by 2022, nine of which have been achieved with four project end reports approved and you have three further reports on today's agenda. The other 11 aims are awaiting and or reviewing data to confirm if their aims have been achieved and all have scheduled for their project end reports to be submitted. And that schedule is now detailed at Appendix one. With the exception of three aims, which are based on the financial year, all project end reports for 2022 will be submitted by the next meeting of the board. Where an aim has not been achieved, the project will still submit a project end report to ensure that the learning and next steps are considered by the board. Otherwise, overall, we have one aim with a red ragging status and two aims where we are still requiring project to provide baseline data. One of those is in respect of Stretch Outcome Eight, which you've considered a report earlier today from Mr Simpson. And the second is in respect of Project 12.7, and that's the case study that we have on today's agenda. And that's there for the project to provide an update on progress with their testing for that project. But also Mr Rayner is going to give us an update on the current position with gathering the baseline data. Finally, in terms of our new project charters, as agreed at the last meeting of the board, the seven improvement aims for Stretch Outcome 16 have been added to the report and the schedule for submission of those charters is detailed there. Otherwise, we had one other charter that was due and that was in relation to Stretch Outcome Five. And the board have agreed earlier today that that improvement aim be removed from the LOIP. And that's all for me, Chair.
Thank you very much for that, Alison. I was going to say, if anyone has questions for Alison, we'll take them now and then we'll move on to Appendix B, if that makes sense to everyone. Any questions? Not seeing any hands. So therefore, Appendix two is the case study and it's pages 71, 72. Now, we should have Pauline here, Pauline Dundas here in the room and Simon Rayner online. So I'm not sure which one of you wants to go first. Do you want to go first, Pauline, and then Simon? Thanks for that. Thanks.
So just to give a bit of background, the KEFFIN machine was purchased in order to try and meet the demands of the Scottish Government to eliminate hepatitis C by 2024. So hepatitis C is a bloodborne virus. It's transmitted from blood to blood contact. Tested by a specific blood test, it's not a routine test that's performed. So the most common route of transmission in gram pain is injecting drug use. Other less common routes include unstabilized equipment for medical procedures abroad and tattoos, et cetera. It can lead to cirrhosis of the liver, liver failure, requiring liver transplant and liver cancer if not treated early. So past treatments that we had were very difficult for patients with weekly injections and side effects such as depression, lethargy, et cetera, with only a 50% chance of cure. So to date, we have treated mainly the easier patients, those who are maybe a bit more stable in their lifestyles. And now we're looking at a lot of the patients who are continuing to inject drugs and continue to pass on hepatitis C infection. So Scottish Government, in 2015, they estimated So Scottish Government, in 2015, they estimated there was 21,000 people in Scotland with hepatitis C. About 50% of those people were undiagnosed. 50% of those who had hepatitis C infection are from the poorest fifth of the Scottish population. And in 2015, World Health Organisation, the Scottish Government committed to the elimination of hepatitis C as a public health concern by 2030. In 2019, the Scottish Government set a target of achieving elimination by 2024. So there was a meeting last week with Public Health Scotland and the Scottish Government, and they estimate that there are 735 individuals currently living in NHS Grampion with active hepatitis C infection. And to date, 59% of those have been diagnosed. Public Health Scotland has also a list of those with a positive Hep C test in Scotland. And soon each health board is going to be sent a list of each patient who is known to have a positive test. And we will then try to engage them in treatment. Face-to-face contact decreased during Covid, so less people are tested and started on treatment for hepatitis C. So this has reduced our aims and aiming to eliminate by 2024. However, Scottish Government are still wanting us to achieve that by 2024. So in order to achieve the elimination by 2024, Public Health Scotland has done some estimates, and NHS Grampion will need to treat approximately 207 patients per year in order to eliminate by 2024. And to give you a bit of background, last year we treated 97, so we'll need to double the amount of patients treated in order to reach elimination. So can elimination be achieved? We think it can. There are new oral treatment regimes. They're only eight to 12 weeks, very little side effects, with a 95% chance of cure with a full course of treatment. We've been working closely with community pharmacies. We offer daily observed dispense, weekly dispense, whichever the patient is prefers. But the problem is it takes about two weeks to set up treatment because it's an expensive treatment they've got to order in specifically. So no pharmacy actually holds stock of this treatment. So it can be difficult to engage patients once they're diagnosed. We're going to do a pilot with the RI pharmacy to dispense patients attending Timmermarket within one week or sooner, linking in with the staff there. Currently, testing is offered wide throughout NHS Grampion alcohol drug services, currently offered by healthcare workers, third sector workers, but not in the social care staff at the moment. So why did we decide to go for KEFID? It's not used in isolation, but as a multi-pronged approach to testing. So if a patient gets a venous sample, the turnaround for detecting active infection is about one to two weeks. And in some patients who have injected drugs, it can be difficult to get a venous sample because of their poor venous access. So we looked at other methods and we've used dried blood spot testing, but the turnaround for that is about four weeks. Some patients have changed address, mobile number. They've been in and out of prison. They've been unable to contact. And some of them are not even aware of the result, and so they can't be engaged in treatment. So KEFID detects active Hep C infection within an hour of the test being performed. It's, we need specific training for it, and it's a portable machine. So difficult-to-reach populations have been targeted at Timmermarket, Fulton, city community pharmacies with a high opiate substitution therapy population. We've secured two healthcare support workers until the end of March 2023 to cut out testing. The machine was purchased by the city ADP, and we first started using the machine in about May 2022. And in the paper, you can see the results to date. So anyone that we have detected hepatitis C active infection and has been commenced on treatment, and we think that engaging that patient, some of them don't wait for the result, but at least if they know they're getting a, a phone call an hour after the test, they tend to answer the phone because it's, it's in their mind at the time. So I think that's been, you know, a good way to engage patients. Some patients, as I say, don't, don't answer their, their phone, and that's been a problem in the past. And that there's a lot of patients out there that don't know that they're hepatitis C positive, even though they've got a positive test, that we do try and contact them. And then you'll see that there's two case studies as well. I won't go through them if you just want to read them, but you can see the difference in using KEFID machine as to not using it. So there was a patient that it took two months actually to trying to get him engaged in treatment because he kept changing phone numbers and was moving around. And if we'd used KEFID, we'd have started him on the same day because he was an inpatient in ARI, and we could have given him the result immediately. The machine is going to be in action during a visit to ADA on the 27th of July. So you can, you can see it in use then. Happy to take any questions on the sign.
Thank you very much for that. Obviously, we're going to come to the visit on the 27th, and that's going to tie in with World Hepatitis Day on the 28th of July. So hopefully, everybody who's present today, either in person or virtually, will be able to make that. I certainly will be attending, and I will be rolling up my sleeve to be tested. I think it's a very good idea that we actually show our support in that way. So please come along and please also be willing to roll up your sleeve. It's not that painful. It's, it's a straightforward scratch. So hopefully, some of you will join me. I don't know. Simon, do you want to come in before I go to questions? Or how?
Well, either. I mean, the, the other bit, just to add in terms of the improvement work, is that we've had to, colleagues in health intelligence have had to do some background work on reconciling some data from sort of paper records into an electronic format. And that's been more complicated than anticipated. So there is a performance data, improvement data in the background that we're still anticipating.
Thank you very much for that. Questions? Luann, thanks.
Thanks. Really great to see new technology being used to, to support this vulnerable group. I suppose for me, the key to success is starting treatment is really important, but the completion of treatment is the key bit for me. And thinking about this being a very chaotic group, I just wanted to understand a bit more what support is put in place to kind of proactively follow people up? And how are we involving families in that as well?
The, the nurses are the ones who see the patients. It used to be that the patient would have to come into clinic in order to be assessed. But now we're doing a lot more over the telephone to give the patient a better chance of engaging into treatment. So the nurses will follow them up by telephone. We contact the community pharmacies as well if we can't get a hold of the patient to see if their compliance has been good. And the community pharmacist has got compliance forms that they have to complete. If the patient hasn't turned up for medication for 48 hours, then they've got to let us know. And then we try and track the patient down, ask what the problems are. It's difficult sometimes to engage families because some of these patients don't even want their families to know that they've got hepatitis C because of the stigma. So that's, that's quite difficult for them. And it's difficult for them sometimes to admit to others that they've got it because of the stigma. So we're trying to get rid of the stigma associated with hepatitis C, make the test, you know, just like a diabetes test, and, and just try and get people to come forward for testing. The Scottish Government had said that the difficult group at the moment, that they're trying to get prevalence data in, is the 50-plus group, because a lot of these people have now disengaged from drug services. And they don't see themselves as at risk, but they've had maybe one injection 40 years ago or whatever, and they are at risk, and they just don't know it yet.
Thank you very much. Counselor McDonald, thanks.
Very much. I was just wondering if, if it tends to be, is there a gender split between those that, that, that engage with, with this? Is it, is, is that, is that important? And I guess it's just the, the data that's in front of us. You mentioned that, you know, four out of 10 people are not diagnosed, which, you know, is quite a high percentage. I just wondered, without going into all the details, but are there hepatitis, remember my, my dad got it in Uganda once? And, and you can have other symptoms, you know, it's, are they very obvious to other agencies and so on? And, you know, how, how you get that seen to, if there are?
So most people with hepatitis C don't develop any symptoms unless it's later stage disease. So if they develop cirrhosis of the liver and/or liver failure or liver cancer, then they can develop. Even at that stage, some of them don't display any symptoms. So it's getting the message over that if you've ever put yourself at risk, please get a test. It's not a routine test. It's not even routinely tested in pregnancy. So hepatitis B and HIV are routinely tested in pregnancy, but Hep C isn't. The reason for that is historically, you couldn't give patients treatment for hepatitis C while they were pregnant because it had risk to the unborn baby. So with hepatitis B, there's a preventative measure that you can put in place as well as HIV. But for Hep C, you were, people thought that you were worrying the mother more by testing them and not being able to treat them at that time and not prevent onward transmission to the baby. However, there's a very low risk of transmission to, to the, the child. So it's, you know, just getting people to think, have they ever had a risk? Please come forward for testing. We've tried to work with GP practices as well when people are registering, you know, offer them, you know, ask if they've been at risk, do a questionnaire or whatever. So I, I don't know any other, but we've tried quite a lot of things to, to engage people. But as you can imagine, it's quite a difficult group to engage. There doesn't appear to be much of a gender split as to who engages and who, who doesn't engage. I think a lot of injection drug users are the majority, well, not the majority, but maybe more males and females, and males can be sometimes more difficult to engage in healthcare. So that might be one of the reasons that they don't engage.
Thank you very much for that. Simon, I see your hand up. Do you want to come in on that? Thanks.
Yeah, just a couple of further points to add on what Pauline is saying. So I guess what we need partners in community planning to do is now that we've got a demonstrable sort of process for being able to test people very quickly and get treatment started very quickly, and the new medication helps us, or helps people clear the virus very quickly, very effectively. That should help reduce some of the stigma. This is, this is perfectly curable. It's, it's, you know, really quite remarkable, the, the advances in technology. So really, we need partners. Now that we've got this machine and the, the opportunity to do all that, we really need partners to come in and help support and, you know, as discussed, reduce the stigma, but create opportunities of, of how we can publicise it and promote it and get people engaged in it. And just for the, for context, I mean, the purpose of elimination is if, if we don't eliminate it, it continues to circulate in the population and we just keep paying for treatment. And that cost, you know, continues within the, the public purse. But if we can eliminate it to the point where it's not really within the population to the same degree, then we, you know, we save money that way. And as Pauline said, it's quite an expensive treatment. So it's the sort of thing that we really need to sort of blitz and, and, you know, make, make a lot of progress quite quickly on it. So any ideas out with the meeting, or if anybody has any suggestions or wants to get involved, then we'd be really grateful for, for that help and support.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Radley?
Thank you, convener. It's just a quick question around the testing versus the treatment. I don't know if I picked up the point wrong, but do all community pharmacies have access to treatment? Or is, you've mentioned one up at Forrester Hill, and I wasn't sure where that sort of came into.
So all community pharmacies have access to the treatment. They have to order it in specifically, and it takes two weeks. Some people, because, some pharmacies, because it's, it's an expensive drug, want prepayment for it. So it's a process of the prepayment that usually takes the time more than ordering in, in the drug. So first, some of our patients, they are seen at Timmermarket twice a week or once a week. And so in order to reduce the time and engage patients, the ARI pharmacy is a secondary care hub that we can dispense the treatment quickly because they can hold a stock. They don't have to, you know, pay pre-order or whatever. And that's where that comes from.
With your indulgence. Is it the case that if people are asked to attend a different location to their usual, they're less likely to comply with treatment or testing?
So some people, when they first engage with Timmermarket, that's where they get their, a lot of the time, their OST script. So they will attend because they have to go back each time to engage before they'll get their next prescription. Sometimes if we dispense it from the community pharmacy, and once they're further down the road, they don't have to engage as much, and they might not go to the pharmacy to pick up their methadone. And then they miss doses of the medication, which decreases the chances of cure. So if we try and get them early into their treatment course, and they're still engaging twice a week or weekly, we can dispense it directly from Timmermarket. And hopefully, they'll have the, even if they miss going to the pharmacy, they'll have it at home, and hopefully they'll take it.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you very much. Any further questions? Well, thank you very much, Pauline, and obviously Simon. The recommendations are on page 48 and 49. There are seven recommendations. Can we agree the recommendations? Thank you very much indeed. In that case, we'll now move on to 2.2, which is the CPA Board Programme of Visits, which we've already heard part of. But Alison, do you want to take us through?
Just to advise members that you have before you the programme of visits to visit a variety of our Lloyd projects throughout the course of the year so that you can see in person the changes they're tasting and the improvements that have been made and embedded by a variety of our partners. The first visit you'll see in your agenda is actually going to be on Monday, and that's to see the work that's been ongoing in terms of increasing free access to physical activity in our schools. Board members are asked to notify us by tomorrow if they're able to attend that visit so that arrangements can be made. And otherwise, we will contact and highlight throughout the year the programme to encourage attendance.
Thank you very much. And if I can just come back, I think for the visit to HMP Grampion, we're limited in numbers. But we can, I think, if I'm correct, arrange further visits. Is, is that correct? Yeah?
Yeah, for the visit to HMP Grampion, we can have seven members, can be accommodated however they have advised that they are happy to put on a further date should demand require it.
Thank you very much indeed for that. And hopefully, we'll see most members at some of the visits. Particularly, I, I certainly will be quite happy to go along to Haddon Street and be tested. And hopefully, you'll join me with that because I think that was a very powerful presentation we've just heard, and a very important piece of work going on there. Moving on then, the recommendation at page 74, there's one recommendation. Can we agree that recommendation? Thank you. And that takes us to 2.3, the Project End Report 4.2, to reduce the number of repeat emergency hospital administration for unintentional injury to children under five years of age by 5% by 2023. And we have Rachel in attendance. Rachel, do you want to take us through the report, please? Thanks.
Well done. That was quite mouthful. Yeah, I've, I guess I've come along. This has been a bit of a journey, this one. It's been known that unintentional injuries have been high across Aberdeen and Dundee for a number of years, but there's been a rapid sort of decrease. This work originally started back, I think we got officially agreed back just before Covid hit. So we'd been doing some focus groups. And we'd also had an agreement with ROSPA around some packs that were provided, that were going to be distributed. However, due to Covid kicking in, it limited everything around face-to-face contact that was needed for this project. So we did our best, and we worked on the virtual learning environment and how that might improve staff's learning around unintentional injuries. And we also worked on how do we get messages out there around unintentional injuries, how to prevent them. It's a, you know, it's a massive prevention issue, you know, unintentional injuries, they're called that because they can They're called that because they can be prevented, you know, that's why they don't use accidents is the word. And unintentional injuries can be a major contribution to deaths in children under fives and have serious disability, which will have massive implications on families across Aberdeen. So with that change, I think I wanted to just acknowledge the good work that was done with the four partners that we had around the kind of learning environment. So that test around, does the virtual learning environment, unintentional injuries module created by Public Health Scotland have an impact on staff, which I think that it did. And also the partnership working that we had around sharing those messages, particularly around social media access. So I really wanted, because that part of the project wasn't around repeat admissions. The charter did change to repeat admissions. And I think what you'll probably have heard quite a bit was the struggle with the data. I think what we did find out eventually was there wasn't a major issue with the repeated missions. Hence the request for the closure of the report. However, I would, I think I recommended that the virtual learning environment with the module is certainly something that we would recommend for any early years practitioners coming through, new early years practitioners. And that's kind of one of the big sort of key points that I want to say, it's not the end. I don't know if I should burst into song there, but I do feel that there really needs to be more promotion around making sure that staff are equipped to have those early conversations. You know, we will be seeing a lot of change, you know, we know that people who are struggling with poverty, people who are in houses where, you know, they're, one of the, the kind of issues that we had that come up, that we couldn't really explore much further was housing, private housing and equipping your house to protect your child. We know through one of the focus groups previously that the parents were concerned because they might receive fines for, you know, scratches on windows from having a door catch put in or furniture that was in the house. So there was these kind of concerns that we didn't get to explore further. So yeah, I'm not sure what much more to say about the project, but like I say, I do, it was a big learning curve. There is lots more to do, which I would like to push forward. And I'm exploring with Child Protection with their learning. We know that, you know, early years, we don't think that there is actually an adequate local training around unintentional injuries. So I think we would really like to put forward that the VLE and that learning environment is the place to go to learn and make sure staff are well enough equipped.
Thank you very much for that. And I did like the way you said, however, that was, that is very, very much landed on with me anyway. Questions, councillor Greg, please.
Thanks. The project comes to an end, but as has, as has been mentioned, challenges continue. And challenges include, there's mention of the need for more consistency in approach and use of, shared use of tools. So clearly there's, clearly there's still work to be done at the early years stages. I'm just wondering if, if there will be ongoing tracking going on behind the scenes just so that this, this area of, of concern continues to be, you know, monitored and any action identified.
The positive that's come with this is the group that got together, be it a small group. There were a few key partners, Pete being one, Homestart being another, and Childminding, all who recognised there still needs to be work done. So they are all, you know, we're all still in contact and we will still aim to sort of track and monitor where we can. I know more recently, this is a separate kind of project, but I've just started a PE group around child healthy weight and, you know, movement activity is one of those opportunities in the home. So I've taken that opportunity to make sure that parents are also aware of hazards. And we'll be using the Keeping Kids Safe pack and just that conversation with PE practitioners themselves. They're like, we need to do more of that. So it's, it's just about joining the dots and they know it needs to be done. It's the capacity that is often the hurdle. There's so much on.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that.
Thank you, councillor McDonald, please.
I saw there was, social media was used to, you know, to get, get the comms out there. And as an avid watcher of small children doing silly things on Facebook and other social media, I seem to be drawn to them. I just wondered if there has been any research into how parents share, you know, some of that knowledge even. And we've seen, you know, cameras of small children under, you know, under three managing to get out of their cots and, and, and escape and all the rest of it on social media. And I just, I just wondered if that aspect of it has played into the whole understanding of, let's get up to in the middle of the night and, and, you know, how some of these things can be prevented of going forward.
I guess the way, the way we went down the social media route was a lot of the, the partners are working with families who use social media. So not necessarily much detail in how they individually have shared. But we also worked with ROSPA who have, you know, we, we looked into how people got involved with the social media post and there was actually quite a bit of sharing going on. So it must, I believe it would have sparked off people's interest in it. You know, there was comments and everything that came back with it as well. So it's, it's something that I think we need to continue to look at and it's those methods. Because we were limited really, we, we went on, it was Facebook that we used as the, the kind of medium. However, you know, when you look at younger families, there's Instagram, it's, dare I say TikTok that, that people are moving to. So there'd be further sort of, I guess, testing or looking at what, what does impact on people's choices and ability to make those changes around home.
Thank you very much. Any further, Luanne, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. And just to say thank you, Rachel, for your enthusiasm and for what's been achieved. It's really impressive. My question really is, I am aware, obviously there's a lot of pressure in the system just now. There is a risk that this kind of work just doesn't get the priority that it should. Has there been any work done to evidence the savings that this has made in terms of staff time in hospitals and just to try and make an economic case for why this is really important?
I'm sure nationally ROSPA have probably got some facts and figures on how much it would save the NHS and other sort of social services. So I'll go back and speak to ROSPA about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And hopefully that will come back to us because obviously recommendation three is, is to ensure that progress is monitored and hopefully it can come back as part of that process. I'm not seeing any more hands, so can we agree the recommendations at page eighty three, eighty four? There are three. Thank you very much indeed. And thank you, Rachel. And that takes us to two point four, Project End five point one, increase to eighty percent the number of staff who feel confident about how to directly support or refer a child for support and to signpost the appropriate services by twenty twenty two. And we have Lisa Williams to speak to this, please. Lisa.
Yes, that's me, thanks. So I'm Lisa Williams, I'm on the Quality Improvement Officers for Education. And I'm delighted to come along today to present the end report with regards to this project. As you mentioned, the, to, the plan to increase to eighty percent was established with a group that I didn't lead initially. Another member of staff did and moved on post. So I took this project up kind of halfway through, which I suppose was a bit of a challenge initially, but also meant that there could be some fresh eyes on the project, which was helpful at the time. What we decided was to have kind of four main elements to focus our attention on. And that, that you can see broken down within the report. So our, our monthly drop in sessions for supervision, our one to one supervision for guidance staff sessions. And then through discussion, it became really apparent quite quickly that there are lots of services available across Aberdeen City Council from education, health, social work, community development, third sector, commission services, intervention hub, fit like hub, self-help services and so on. And it was almost a place of where to start, do our staff aware that they are even available. And so therefore signposting of that was really important. So that became a focus. We also felt there was a need for, and some sort of implementation of e-learning, making sure that the career for lifelong learning, training packages were appropriate. And again, we had a solid group of individuals working within this project with a range of knowledge themselves. So what we decided to do was pull that together and we're really happy with what we've produced. So in terms of the presentation, the signposting, the prezi, the link's there for you within the report. It's difficult to put something like that into one presentation. So I think that the Joanne that led on this did a really good job of that. And we've obviously made sure that that has been signposted across, across all agencies. It's on Aberdeen Protects and it's been advertised as a place to go to. And that needs to continue to be the case because it's very clear that even though we've put quite a lot of work into this, some people still don't know that it's there. So there's a wee bit more work to be done around showcasing that in different, you know, places. The ThingLink, again, we're really proud of the work that this, you know, that's been put together for this. If you're not familiar with ThingLinks, it's basically a visual aid that you can, it's, it's interactive. You can, I use ThingLinks for everything now, it's become a bit of a joke within my team. Because if, if there's ever discussion, it's the instant go to, but it's such an easy resource to link documents, to link videos, to link websites and TED Talks, et cetera. So we've created one with this mental, you know, supporting children's mental health as a focus. And we're really, that's been warmly received by our staff across a few different sectors, which is great. In terms of signposting for the supervision that's, that I mentioned earlier, for the guidance staff, we moved away from the group supervision to the one to one supervision because that, through our evaluation processes, that was definitely something that was being requested. Over the last couple of months, although we're only trialing it in two secondary schools, there has been over thirty one to one sessions already. And again, with positive evaluations coming back from those. As you mentioned earlier, Rachel, this is a bit similar in that it's not a finished project. There is obviously a lot of work to continue to happen here. Even just yesterday and the day before, through our in-service training, we were offering links with the university, looking at listening and supporting wellbeing and self-care for all staff members and education. And there were, again, a huge turnout and really warmly received. The, the other elements that we think that could continue to, to be developed, really we felt there was a, a link here with the, with the mental health collaborative. And it seemed to make more sense for some of our group members to help by offering our time and our expertise to that group to further develop things rather than finding we're both doing similar projects.
Thank you very much for that. And obviously this has been a really big piece of work. And if you can take our thanks back to your colleagues, because I think there's obviously been a lot of people involved in actually delivering this for us. So thank you very much. Questions, please? I'm not seeing any hands. So thank you very much indeed for coming along to present that. We have four recommendations at page ninety. Can we agree the recommendations, please? Thank you very much indeed. That takes us to two point six, Project End ten point two, increase to thirty in total the number of individuals who are on, who are on a custodial sentence on a community payback order with a supervision requirement on unpaid work orders on demand or who have been diverted from prosecution, who are being supported to make progress in the employability pipeline by September twenty twenty two. And we have Nicola Graham.
Thank you very much. So this project, as you've just explained, it aimed to support thirty individuals, individuals at varying stages and processes of the criminal justice system to progress along the employability skills pipeline. The project has achieved its aim of thirty with sixty three individuals progressing at least one stage along the employability skills pipeline. We've put some detail of what that pipeline is in the paper, with thirty six moving into a positive destination. The project offered two referral routes, one route for those in the community living in Aberdeen City who needed and wanted support with employability and a second route for those in custody and coming out of custody. We were also really conscious though, that some of our third sector partners do some excellent work in the community around this area of work. And some of these organisations have contracts with Justice Social Work to deliver employability support. So the outcomes that we've noted in this Project End Report does therefore not count their engagements or interventions, only those that came through the My Way to Employment project and requiring multi-agency support. In terms of sustainability, the community referral route for My Way to Employment is now mainstreamed into ABZ Works, Aberdeen City's Employability Offer, and it links back into employability planning via the Local Employability Partnership, who reports to Aberdeen Prosperous and onwards. In terms of HMP Grahampean, that is continued to be sustained and developed, sustained via the Case Management Board, which for those of you who will come on the visit, will get to see that Case Management Board in action. And in terms of development, HMP Grahampean colleagues are continuing to develop their employability approach after having tested out approaches with employers such as Green King and also with C-Fine. An employability subgroup is continuing to take this, this forward. The project group was a real mix of public and third sector agencies. So I just want to thank them for their involvement in this. And if I may put a plea out as well, Apex, one of our My Way to Employment members, is looking to take a cleaning social enterprise company to Aberdeen. They run it successfully in Edinburgh. But in order to do that, they need to have, I suppose, members here, consider when you're doing procurement and you're looking at contracting out, that you might consider looking to Apex, who will then go on if they can get enough work here to employ folk from the criminal justice system as cleaners. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And hopefully your sales pitch will be taken up. I hasten to add, but I think this is the, another paper today where we're actually seeing the benefit of some of the visits and things tying in as well. So, and actually maybe actually pulls into focus some of the great work that's actually being done by partners. And hopefully a few of us will manage to engage with staff at HMP Grahampean and get some first hand additional information on the visit. If I can go to questions, please? That's two people have got off lightly with no questions in succession. So thank you very much indeed for attending. Nicola, there are three recommendations at page one six one. Can we agree the recommendations, please? Thank you very much indeed. And that takes us then to two point seven, Project End ten point six, increase by fifteen percent victims of domestic abuse receiving support by twenty twenty two. And we have Lucy Simpson, please.
Good afternoon, thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm here today to present my end report for Project ten point six. You may remember that I attended back in November with the case study on the same project. So it's just to wrap that up and give a bit more context to that. So just in terms of the background to the report, we know that domestic abuse continues to be underreported in the city and there are various reasons for this happening. We also know that families may live with domestic abuse for a significant period of time before getting effective help. And this can be up to four years in Scotland. There are many reasons why families live with domestic abuse for that period of time or potentially return to the abuser after attempting to leave. It may not be apparent to the victim that the relationship is abusive. They may be afraid of the abuser and fear the consequences for others if they disclose the abuse. They also may not know where to turn for help. And victims can experience fear and shame as common effects of domestic abuse. For these reasons, and as part of Aberdeen's Violence Against Women partnerships commitment to ensuring that people who experience domestic abuse have access to appropriate support, we look to undertake some tests for change in the last year to increase the number of people accessing support. Our tests for change included online awareness sessions as a method of increasing young people's awareness of local support services. So these were done with Nescall. We look to develop a domestic abuse champions model and recruitment of volunteers to increase confidence in referring young people to support as well as others. And this included in-depth domestic abuse training to these volunteers who are then able to go on and train their colleagues and further staff members. We did a number of in-depth domestic abuse sessions with staff from Substance Misuse Services and have started doing these with housing and support services as well as other areas in the council. At the end of our testing, we've achieved our aim with a forty seven percent increase in the number of victims of domestic abuse receiving support. So this has increased to two thousand nine hundred and forty five accessing support in twenty twenty one, twenty two, compared with two thousand and four and twenty twenty, twenty twenty one. Throughout the year of testing, we've also achieved the following results. We've seen a forty percent increase in the number of young people accessing domestic abuse support and a twenty four percent increase in adults. At our online awareness sessions with students, an average of sixty eight percent students at the end of the sessions reported an increased awareness of local support services. And our eighteen domestic abuse champions that have been established have completed in-depth domestic abuse training and have started rolling that out within their own services and organisations. We've had forty five substance misuse staff complete the training and a hundred percent of those substance misuse staff surveyed advised that they will change their work practice following the training. Going into twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, sorry, twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three, we're already seeing an increase in those seeking support in the first three quarters going forward. And this is likely to increase. However, it should be noted that reported incidents of domestic abuse in Aberdeen City are down to the police. So we are working with Police Scotland to look at the reasons why people aren't feeling confident to report those incidents. In terms of scale and spread, we're going to continue rolling out that training across our frontline services. And our domestic abuse champions will also focus and target other underrepresented groups, such as older people and other hard to reach groups, like the LGBTQ plus community and those with disabilities. It's clear from our project that, not just our project, but local research as well, that victims of domestic abuse potentially don't recognise what they're experiencing. So this is why that further targeted awareness raising is needed and will be continued. And although testing has been positive, we can't discount the effects that the pandemic and multiple lockdowns have had either. So bearing that in mind, we're probably going to continue to see the fallouts of that continue for those experiencing abuse. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If I can maybe come in first. Obviously, you were saying that there's only certain amounts of data available to you. And I just wonder, from the data that we do have, do we have any concerns that any particular age groups or demographics are obviously not present when, you know, if we assume certain figures over a population, that would suggest that we maybe have an age or a demographic identifier that doesn't come into our system seeking help and therefore that we maybe need to target in future going down the line? Is there any data in and around that? Thanks.
Yeah, so we regularly collect data from our statutory and third sector organisations. And what we tend to see from the data is that the kind of twenty five plus up to maybe fifty age range tends to be the most prevalent with younger people and older people being less prevalent. Part of the reason we focused on young people in this project was because they kind of represent that hidden victim group. You know, a lot of young people don't maybe recognise what abusive behaviour is, the different types of abusive behaviour that can happen now, especially with the amount of kind of cyber-related harm that is out there. But similarly with the older age groups, so maybe kind of sixty, sixty five plus. A lot of these people will have been living with domestic abuse for potentially decades, not realising again that what they're experiencing is abuse and it having been normalised throughout their long marriage. So part of the reason why we are looking to potentially move on to focus older people as a target group. The way that we communicate with older people will look very different to how we've done it with young people. So looking at how we can amend and adjust what we've done with this project to target that kind of age range.
Thank you very much. I anticipated my second question with how we deal with different age groups because obviously young people have got a very different outlook from people of, I'll say, my age, but there you go. Thank you for that. Counselor Greg, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the report and for all the really excellent work. I think that there's a lot to be proud of in seeing the focus and the results of this work. Domestic abuse is a very, it's a very covert kind of activity. And I think that when you look at the, it's very clear from the data and the trends that there's a lot that's going on that we don't know about and that does need that further effort and targeting. You can see that, for example, in that spike of young people accessing domestic abuse support. For me, there's the graph that shows the number accessing domestic abuse support drops after twenty one, twenty two. But in my opinion, that's going in the wrong direction. So I just wondered if we might have a little bit more explanation about that. Appreciating that we have, you know, that a lot has been achieved and knowing that there's still an enormous amount of work out there. But just a little bit more context around that, around that graph on page one six six would help.
Yeah, is that the number accessing domestic abuse support?
Yes, there's a considerable drop of age, well, of age not recorded and the totals.
Yeah, so that doesn't give the full year picture yet for that graph. But also we've started recording age more accurately now. So even though the age not recorded in twenty twenty one, twenty two is high, you'll see from the other kind of graphs that the other age ranges have kind of slightly increased. And we've still got another two quarters worth of data to go alongside that twenty two, twenty three data.
Thank you for that. I would certainly like to see more, more, more training, more awareness raising so that particularly young people know where to turn to. So thanks for that.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bradley.
Thank you. I don't see in the report, and apologies if I've missed it. But there is obviously some delays in sort of criminal justice proceedings due to the pandemic and other factors. Do you find that's having an impact on people accessing domestic abuse services? And on the flip side of that, or I might, I should say, are people accessing the services and maybe not taking it further because of those delays?
Yeah, I think that is part of the reason. And I think that's why we've continued to see an increase in the people accessing services, but a decrease in the number reporting to police. And I think, yeah, the length of time it's taking to go through the justice system, but also the ability to get legal representation is causing those factors as well. And we have recently started having discussions with the Procréate or Fiscal's Office and Crown Office about how we can better manage that and better support those who are experiencing abuse. And as I said, Police Scotland, our representatives in the Violence Against Women Partnership have met with our third sector organisations as well to look at how we can better support people to report to the police as well.
Thank you very much. Counselor McDonald, thanks.
Thank you. And thank you very much for the report and the work that is being done. But isn't it just so depressing that we are still here after so many decades of domestic abuse being a scourge in our society? And I know that the police are, you know, have put this bunting centre in what they're going to do going forward. And, you know, we really do need to tackle domestic abuse, not just in the way we gather data and all the rest of it, but there is something that is still in the heart of our community that, you know, we're not getting right. I guess for me, that what's not perhaps in here is maybe around some people who, how we record the data as well and who are abusers in families. And I know that there are particular issues around some extended ethnic minority families where it might be somebody who, it's not your partner, but it's maybe your partner's mother or father who is the one who is meeting out the domestic abuse. And I know that there are difficulties around gathering some of that data because they're not seen as being abusers and such. So the question was really around how we do try to capture some of that data because that can, that can have huge effects on the family and particularly some of those women who perhaps are here not, you know, they can't even perhaps explain their abuse because they're maybe here on their partner's passport for university or whatever and feel absolutely trapped in a wider domestic abuse scenario.
Yeah, I think that will continue to be a challenge. Data collection is always a challenge. But we are, through the Violence Against Women Partnership, we are collecting data to inform a data dashboard, which then feeds further into the wider public protection agenda. The Police Scotland regularly collect data on perpetrator information. But this is obviously only if people report to the police. So we are probably still missing a chunk of data around those who don't go via Police Scotland. So it's something that we'll continue to work on. We also get data from the likes of Justice Social Work. But our third sector organisations are limited in what they collect. They're limited on what they can provide. They all collect data in different ways and different formats. So sometimes that consistency and data reading can be challenging.
And I just wanted to tie back to perhaps something that was said earlier about the fire service and how often, just to get a sense of how often perhaps other agencies do pick up on some of this and then feed in to, you know, the correct body that can then pick up the data. And even just anecdotally watching, you know, something like Happy Valley when you're, when you're looking, you know, at a programme like that and noticing things like cupboards with locks on them and so on, you know, things that you just don't think about yourself. But when you're seeing it in a programme like that, you begin to recognise straight away some behaviours that are out there in society.
Yeah, and I think it's why we're focusing our training on services like our repairs team who are regularly going into households to be able to potentially pick up these signs that maybe nobody else has got access to the house and the home. Similarly, we're doing training with children and family social work around safe and together model with, you know, partnering with the non-offending parent. So there are plenty of opportunities that we're going to take forward and continue to work hard to make sure that we are getting those people noticed and the support is then provided to them.
Thank you, Mrs. Scott.
Thank you, Lucy, for the report. Just to maybe build on the points that Counselor McDonald's made. I'm aware that there's a forum called Medics Against Violence. I think they have a footfall in the city as well. They identify, so you referenced, Lucy, to older women who are not perhaps acknowledging, but they may be presenting with the symptoms that are not obvious. They may be presenting at a dentist with broken teeth, for example. So I'm just curious, and again, I'm conscious that we've got colleagues who are going to be involved in the HDRC here today, that whether there's scope for us to start to look at the data of presentations within the variety of the health system that are presenting with some obvious signs of domestic abuse. Again, whether we can join up that data, Lucy. So the question is just, are we linked in to the Medics Against Violence in Aberdeen? And with your colleague Santini here from HDRC, is there scope for you lads to do some interest and work together?
Thank you. We have had contact with Medics Against Violence. We're probably not as linked in as we need to be. We are obviously linked in to NHS Public Protection. I'll be honest, the data that we get from the NHS is minimal. And it's just, and it's just because of the way that they record their routine inquiries. And I don't think dentist practices will even have a mechanism for recording. You know, if somebody does disclose or if there are signs and symptoms of domestic abuse. So there's definitely work that the Violence Against Women Partnership can take forward with NHS on that. And yeah, happy to have a conversation around that.
Okay, Luanne, thanks.
Thank you. I noted in the report that it does talk about there is a risk that services might be overwhelmed. And it's fantastic to see this work, but I think that's a reality. I'd just be interested to understand a bit more what we're doing around using digital and new technologies to help support women that are struggling and also how we're ensuring lived experience is right at the centre of that. So we're not just following a traditional, you're on a waiting list, nothing can happen until you get seen, you know, that type of older style approach.
Yeah, definitely. It has been a challenge for our third sector organisations, especially because they rely so heavily on funding. They're limited in the scope of their recruitment and things like that. So waiting lists have fluctuated over the last couple of years, especially kind of as we kind of came out of COVID and lockdown, we saw huge rises in waiting lists. Alternatively, the kind of bonus of that was the different ways in which we then engaged with those who are experiencing. So less face-to-face visits, a lot of women actually preferring phone calls or Zoom meetings rather than coming out the house and meeting a worker elsewhere. So in a way, it gives workers a bit more capacity because they're not having to go between visits, especially for the likes of Graham's Women's Aid or our council domestic abuse team who cover Aberdeen Shire as well. Just having that scope of not having to potentially travel for a couple of hours for one visit has helped with that capacity. But it's something that we are continuing to monitor. It's in our risk register that we have for the Violence Against Women Partnership that we review quarterly and will continue to do that.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any more hands, so I'll assume there are no more questions. The recommendations are on page one six nine or three. Can we agree the recommendations? Thank you very much indeed. And that takes us to item three on the agenda. Three point one, Your Safety Matters, the joint pledge. And Mr. Mackay, Vice Chair, will introduce the report and then hand over to Sergeant Fraser Robertson, Chief Inspector Robert Sturton and Colin Scott, who are obviously here in attendance. Over to you then, Mr. Mackay. Thanks.
I'll duck it very quickly because I don't want to take it away from any of the work that Chief Inspector Rob Sturton and his team have done. And I think Rob will manage to introduce the port and we've got some colleagues from our national teams as well with us today. So I'll probably just take, hand on to Rob, if you don't mind, Rob. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Vice Chair. Thank you, Chair, and good afternoon, colleagues. I was just having a quick look around the room there and in time honoured fashion, wouldn't be a presentation from the police unless we pitched up mob handed. But we are all very grateful for the opportunity, the team here, to come here today and give you a little bit more information around about Your Safety Matters and discuss the potential for a local joint partnership pledge. So a brief introduction, I'm Rob Sturton. I'm the Chief Inspector Responsibility for Support and Service Delivery for North East Division. And I'm also the Your Safety Matters Champion for the division. Fraser Robertson, who the Chair introduced there, is our You Matter Coordinator, who is fully invested in all things safety and wellbeing in the division. And we've got Colin Scott here, who's our Projects and Delivery Manager with Corporate Communications based in Glasgow. And I'm really grateful to Colin for travelling to the city today to present in person. So conscious of the pretty weighty agenda that you've had to get through today, everyone. So we'll break down the content of the report, included in the papers, to bite-sized chunks for you to digest. I'll cover a little bit about the purpose and background. Fraser? I'll cover a little bit about the purpose and background. Fraser will take us through the local partnership pledge proposal in a bit more detail. And Colin will provide you with a brief presentation around about the Y S M journey, the pledge in action and the practical application of the communications product. I'll maybe just take you through the next steps at the end and we can invite any questions you might have at that juncture. So in relation to our intention today, it's purely to provide colleagues with a broad awareness of Your Safety Matters and its development, both from a Police Scotland perspective and local and national terms and how that fits into the potential for a joint local partnership pledge. This will touch on our national, regional and wider divisional approaches and the opportunity to identify and share good practice. So briefly, in terms of background, you'll see from the paper that we highlight the unique job that police officers and staff perform in society is both challenging and rewarding. But we also recognise and understand that working in the police service may result and in all likelihood will result in exposure to abusive or violent behaviour, which has impacts on physical and mental wellbeing. The support and protection of police officers, police staff and indeed our special constables is of paramount importance. And it's vital that we better protect our staff to enable them to better protect the public and continue to deliver the excellent service to our communities that we expect here in the North East. And I know that the Divisional Commander has this very close to his heart. So in August 2020, the Chief Constable recognised and highlighted the unacceptable increase in assaults on police officers and police staff to the Scottish Police Authority Board. The figures returned should an increase against the five-year average for the second consecutive year. And contextually, between April and June that year, that totalled 1,775 assaults, which is a pretty significant number, I'm sure we'd all agree. The Chief made it clear at that time that all forms of aggressive or threatening behaviour against our personnel is simply not part of the job. And that no police officer or member of police staff should expect to be assaulted or abused in the course of their work. He made a personal commitment at that time in the form of an assault pledge, which was initiated with the support of a range of stakeholders, including the Lord Advocate and Cabinet Secretary for Justice. So in essence, the Chief Constable's Your Safety Matters Assault Pledge had the aim of ensuring that our people feel safe and supported whilst discharging their duties, are well-prepared in terms of procedures, guidance and equipment, have confidence in reporting incidents in a timely manner and can seek additional support when required. It's driven through a diamond group, which is D C C-led, and engages in an end-to-end strategic review of violence towards our staff and the development of Y S M champions, multi-agency groups and local processes which cut across all business areas and include local policing. In November last year, the approach was expanded through the launch of a national partnership pledge, which underlines a joint commitment to reduce violence and abuse against frontline workers with a national partnership group of signatories, including British Transport Police, NHS Scotland, Scottish Prison Service, Scottish Ambulance Service and a range of others. So the group would extend the Y S M methodology and share best practice, develop preventative measures and use consistent messaging in workplaces to support and encourage staff to report incidents. So what we've seen is some good practice and collaboration opportunities already being developed, which mutually benefit staff across all agencies and nurture an integrated approach, reducing the risks of staff becoming victims. Essentially what we're looking at and probably to paraphrase from fire service colleagues earlier on, what works. Importantly, it's also been agreed that endorsing this message externally is as important as doing so internally so that the public better understand that assaults on any member of our staff is not part of the job. So that's a bit of a whistle-stop tour around about the background to Your Safety Matters. And I'll hand over to Fraser in relation to the local partnership pledge and he'll give you an idea about how that looks, the key objectives and the communications messaging we're proposing. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Chair, and thanks to the board for allowing us to come along today. So in relation to the local partnership pledge, it's proposed that this pledge will take place between the local authority, Police Scotland, which is in its entirety here in North East Division, and partners to align the campaign basically from the outset for us to reduce the number of assaults on emergency and frontline workers in the North East. The local partnership pledges themselves are iterations which share the core messaging across all agencies, officers and staff in their relevant local authority areas. Looking to do this, we'll use a collaborative approach, providing greater opportunities to cascade the messaging to local communities, looking to gain their understanding and support. The collaborative approach will give a single messaging theme from multiple trusted sources, making it easy for the internal and external target audiences to adopt and engage with and reiterating the message that we're trying to get across at every possible opportunity. The aim of these local pledges is to raise awareness amongst officers and staff of the overarching national Police Scotland Y S M agenda and also the additional work carried out by the Y S M External Partners Group, which has channeled support from partner agencies in the creation of the National Assault Pledge, which has been endorsed by all our partners. The local partnership pledge itself would look to replicate on the National Assault Pledge in that the objectives set out there are to assure officers and staff nationally that their safety is a priority for their respective organisations. That's following through on initial messaging and making sure that from the initial point of putting that across the staff, that's replicated and the message isn't lost through anything else that should come to the forefront as time goes on. Ensuring officers and staff are aware of the training, support and aftercare that's available to them. That's key. My role as a wellbeing leading division to ensure that all my colleagues and peers are aware of the support that is out there. So should they be the victim of an assault or abuse, whatever form it takes, that we are extending the hand of support, whatever opportunity arises. Ensuring senior leaders and line managers are aware of the role in meeting their organisation's commitments to their staff. I think that gravity alone won't keep the stone rolling when a pledge like this has been put into motion. What we need is the buy-in from line managers, anybody who's supervising and colleagues looking after their colleagues and peers to make sure that the message is just, is out there, it's reachable and people have it in the front of their mind. And we're promoting comprehensive reporting and recording of assaults and abuse. Far too often, especially in our line of work, the people will kind of say, it's not worth it. It is worth it because the picture paints a thousand words. The public don't see me or any of my colleagues going home with a fat lip or a bloody nose and the impact that that's got on our families and extended families as well. So if these things aren't being reported, the public, the partners, nobody's getting an accurate picture of not just the assaults themselves, but the wide range and implications they've got. And also, we're looking to raise awareness among the public and the issues related to assaults and abuse on officers and staff and looking to gain their understanding and support. With the people around the table today, all the partner agencies, the reach that everybody's communications channels have is the horizon and beyond, whereas through a single approach, there's always going to be a hurdle or a blocker and you can only reach so far. So we're looking to use everybody's conduits to make sure that we can get the message out as far as we can. With the development of a communication strategy using the hashtag not part of the job and related messaging, the External Partners Group can provide a consistent approach across all partners at all levels within their respective organisations. And with that in mind, that's where I'd like to introduce my colleague Colin Scott from Corporate Communications. He's been a driving force behind the picture of the development of this from the outset. And he'll be able to talk you through what the products we have already and how we can assist you in moving things forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Fraser and Chair. I think it's absolutely true that this did start off as a Police Scotland initiative, but actually the power of national partnerships, where we ultimately felt it could go, has been so powerful. Because it gives top cover to each area within Scotland. The power of one single message across multiple organisations is something that genuinely has never been done before, to my knowledge, in communications and across this type of business area. The cost benefits, the benefits to our people and the benefits to those that we serve in the diverse communities across Scotland are only starting to become, you know, known to us through the first two partnerships that we did. So really surprising feedback in that normal Police Scotland campaigns maybe receive about 5.6% engagement rates on social media. Ever since it started, it's been, these campaigns have received in excess of 6% engagement rates. So incredible engagement, real kind of interest from the public, real buy-in from the public. And more importantly, actually, when we started putting the messages out, it was colleagues across the different emergency services and frontline working services who were responding back and saying, totally agree with this, totally support all of this. It's fantastic. So essentially, as part of the project, Police Scotland did develop in conjunction with an established communications group made up of comms experts from all of the partners. We established a route or a series of products that made it very easy. Because we realised that every comms, every agency or every organisation has got their own pressures when they have to talk to their own staff or they have to talk to their own audience groups. So the idea is make it simple, do it when you can and it fits in with your current plans, et cetera. But the actual benefits of that are way beyond. If it's possible to move on a couple of slides. Maybe the next one again, yeah. And again. And again, sorry. So some of the messaging that was created has actually been probably some of the strongest messaging that Police Scotland has actually pushed out into the public domain and actually talks about the power of arrest. Because quite often in those terms, we tend to shy away from that because we don't want to scare people. But actually, what we're doing now is we say, you know, the first poster there talks about for the internal audience, report it because here are the benefits. And it's not just the fact that it's a physical assault, but it's the near misses is every single thing that happens in the environments to be working that can have an impact on an individual's wellbeing or their ability to do their job or to serve, you know, serve public properly. The middle poster there was something very, very focused at the point where it happens. So in custody suites, but also it translated into posters within A and E down in De Vries and Galloway. Because it just states the fact that this is not acceptable, this behaviour is not acceptable, no spitting, no, you know, no swearing, no biting, dead simple, dead easy. And then the third message there is something that was developed for the Covid vaccination centres in Ayrshire because it was a high incidence of abuse to staff and stuff. And a very simple message again, don't abuse our staff, it will not be tolerated with the sub-messaging there that could lead to your arrest. So three very simple messages aimed at three very different audience groups because we all have those individuals who trust us with information. So everyone that follows our organisations on social media and all the other channels that we have. We also have our colleagues who work with us to deliver those services. You know, so it's important that we start to develop a range of messaging that sits with both. So the encouraging part of it to increase reporting, to seek support, to stand up for your colleagues, you know, to live the values of the organisations, that type of thing. Right down to those who are really focused on perpetrating the behaviour to say, in a very strong way, this is not acceptable. And then, you know, we actually do the softer side of things as well. So very locally focused partnership experiences where we can go out into communities, we understand because we're working at that community level, you know what works in that community. So you might have an arts project, as we did in De Vries and Galloway, engaging with schools and, you know, local youth groups essentially. And the theme of that was if your coach didn't turn up to work because they get assaulted at work, how would you feel about that? You know, how would you display that in a creative piece and things? And that went down in an absolute storm. So lots of engagement, lots of different audience groups getting involved. So there's, and all of that actually comes from how each individual area decides to do things. What we've got established essentially is a framework. You know, it's a creative style that doesn't vary. It's a single key message that doesn't vary. It's social media message that doesn't vary. And the only variance is when you get down to your local level and find out what works in your particular thing. So it could be messages projected onto the wall of a local nightclub where you've seen lots of instances of antisocial behaviour. There's messaging within shops in the area because the retailers against crime network are part of this group. You know, it's when you see it when you go into your local G P, you go into your local dentist, you go into A and E, you know, so all the various touchpoints are all the same. And actually, that builds the confidence within our own colleagues as well because they see that, they see the same message. They don't see a poster from 10 years ago saying, don't abuse our staff because it's not appropriate. And it's not really a relevant message anymore. You know, it's actually everywhere, everywhere anyone goes, this is where the message appears. If we could move on a slide again, please. That's just an example of the social media message. And actually, what that does is it starts to humanise the individuals. So it's, you know, how was your day at work? Well, today I was insulted, threatened and assaulted. And then we're going to talk about why that's not appropriate. So we actually take it from something which is not really tangible for the public, but something which is very, you know, understandable, essentially through very simple messaging and just reinforcing it with, this is the range of partners who are behind us. So you know, it really needs to be something that is taken on board. The next slide, I believe, shows the actual message itself on social media. I'll just read that out actually. So as first responders in your area, our job is to rush to your aid and keep you safe. We don't expect you, don't expect to be abused, insulted or threatened. That's not part of the job. The harm caused by this lasts long after our shift ends and in a dangerous situation can put both our lives at risk. Aggression, threatening behaviour or verbal abuse towards us is an offence and may result in your arrest. So we use that, that's been used in Ayrshire, that's been used in De Vries and Galloway. That can be used anywhere because we're just dropping in that location. And then off the back of that, there's a whole range of. Oh, sorry. If you could drop forward a couple of slides as well, sorry. Yeah. So really, it's just down to the partnerships to have that discussion about what works for them, what channels you currently have. And which ones that can all be used to target the various different audience without actually spending any money. Because all of the creative work has been done, all of the assets have been created. So it's essentially it's a really low impact financially, low impact on time for your comms teams, but high impact on the visibility of this campaign and high impact on the potential changes to behaviour that it can affect. Happy to take any questions. Chair, thank you.
Thank you very much for that. And maybe can I start? And first of all, could we maybe have the slides circulated to all the members? Would that be helpful? Because sometimes when we're trying to read them on the screen, it's a little bit difficult. So I think it would be helpful if we could maybe have them circulated. And there's a couple of folk absent today. I'm sure they'll take an interest in that. And as an ex policeman, albeit many years ago, I found it very interesting you put spitting up there at the top because I always personally found that one of the worst things that can ever happen to you, for somebody to spit on you. I don't know why, but I always found that a very difficult thing to tolerate in any shape or form. For the members of the board, we're actually got a number of different recommendations today. Apart from being asked to adopt the proposals in the report, we are being asked to canvass partner agencies for inclusion in a focus group and identify named representatives, including communication leads. To consider the role of a lead partner in the campaign and to consider which partner is best to lead on this. Well, Police Scotland may be a natural choice. We feel that another partner leading on the campaign may have greater impact. So it is understood to extend beyond policing. So I wonder if we can maybe take that recommendations on board as well, if we're asking any questions because I do think there's a little bit of debate to be had in there for us as a board to actually take this forward in the correct direction. So if I can open to questions first of all, and councillor Greg, thanks.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I'm very, indeed, I'm entirely supportive of adopting the Chief Constable's Assault Pledge. I've been out on patrol with police officers in the past on quite a few occasions. And you really experience face-to-face the vulnerabilities that frontline officers are dealing with when they're out on the street. And I have to say, I'm always amazed at the professionalism. Well, I'm not really amazed. It's just always there. It's the vocation of the police officers. Their professionalism is so strong, their patience is, and the patience in dealing with troubling situations is is amazing and it's wonderful. So I think everything that we can do to So I think everything that we can do to protect frontline officers, we need, we need to be doing that. That, that, that is essential. And I mean, I, I appreciate that it is quite a, quite considerable task ahead of us. Because we're trying to influence, we're trying to influence pub, public opinion, we're trying to make. A kind of a cultural change, but I, I think it's possible if we, if we all work together. There's mention there of the, of the partnership pledge. And I know that errors and the nurses, housing staff, many, many people out there working face to face with the public. Are dealing with often quite similar situations because, you know, with, with troubled and troublesome individuals. So working together is, is absolutely essential. I'm very pleased to see this proposal and the, and this, and this recommendation. Because we want to make our society more peaceful, more, more, more tolerant and more respectful. But it's, how, how do we, how do we make the, the chief constable's pledge work alongside the partnership one? I mean, there, there are, you know, you can see there are some differences there. So how, you know, kind of how do they, how do they relate when they're dealing with two significantly diverse groups of professionals?
I think I can, Chair, I can answer, answer that. The, it began life as the chief constable's pledge and actually the chief constable pledge lives within Police Scotland. But actually it's evolved into the national pledge. So the national pledge is what we now talk about. And actually within Police Scotland, we don't tend to talk about your safety matters anymore, we tend to talk about not part of the job. So we've evolved through our lived experiences, we've, we've just evolved it from that into something that predominantly works as a national entity. But then it's supported at various local levels essentially. So what we've got is a really strong framework for moving forward. We always talk about, you know, not part of the job and essentially we use the same assets. And then we quite often have a different mix of, of partners, some taking lead. You know, some being part of it and stuff. So actually the good thing about it is it's really flexible in, in terms of its, its, its design and the fact that it can be. Unique to the local area. Because that was one of the stipulations that we thought right at the start, you know, how do we make this work? Rather than being Police Scotland saying, you know, this is the chief constable pledge, maybe not, people might not get on board with that. Certainly our officers and staff do, but not everyone tends to do that. So to all intents and purposes, we started there, we're now a national, it's a national entity. And really it's a case of hopefully. The national partnership co-signators will actually increase and grow. Because once we start to roll it out, the recent Galloway council came on board, they were fantastic. So, so once we start. In, increasing the partnership numbers, then that's when that group starts to grow and that's where it starts to become really, really powerful essentially. But just that's one single core message.
Yeah, okay, um, thanks, thanks for that. Yeah, I, I, I wasn't entirely clear that it was adaptable to local circumstances. So is that something that we would be looking to do here, maybe try and localize, localize the message?
Sorry Chair, I'll take that if you don't mind. The first thing probably to say councillor Greg is thanks for your comments around about the professionalism of the officers. And I'm aware that you have been out on a number of different occasions with some of our, our teams on the frontline. And it's, it's encouraging and heartening to hear about your experiences. But also I know that you have seen them exposed a range of different scenarios where it has been really challenging. So I, I think it's Collins highlight that there, and this is about developing on the framework that is already existing. And, and looking at the scalability to a certain extent. But also looking at how we can expand upon the YSM toolkit bespoke to the collective needs of the local partnership. And perhaps make it unique to the local area, I think that's what we're trying to achieve here, driving towards an official partnership launch. And in my own mind, I, I see probably three key takeaways in relation to what we're proposing here. And the first is the strength is in the collective. So no one area has exclusivity on good ideas. And, and what we've got is, is a very good idea and we want to develop that, that further. I, I think the second is, is the opportunity to jointly advocate for change. I think that is, is really significant and important. And, and the third is, as Colin's been expanding upon there, the, the consistency of the message from trusted sources across all sectors. Is key in developing our understanding and widening our reach. Because it almost becomes bacterial in that sense whereby you're getting a strong, consistent, trusted version of a message that comes out across the piece. So I think just for that bit of clarity, we see this as a, a scalable framework. That we can then look to develop locally with some bespoke and unique elements to it. Particularly focusing around about what we've already done in the NIDIP space, so the North East Division Integration Project. And, and maybe that's kind of coming back to your question councillor, around about what we can do with the framework that we have.
Okay, thank you for that. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Councillor McDonald, thanks.
Thank you very much. I well remember in, in the domestic violence. Arena, the, the zero tolerance campaign which, which started. And, and that was a campaign which then went out into different spheres of, of life about behavioural change. And many organisations took up a zero tolerance banner in, in different guises. And I see, I see some elements of that in, in, in this particular proposal in front of us. And, you know, I, I know from my own experience and from being a councillor. The, the range of people doing their job on a day to day basis who are in the frontline. Whether it is the, the NHS, whether it's our teachers, whether it's bus drivers, whether it's. You know, people working in retail or, or, or in the entertainment sector. And, and, and totally and utterly agree with the not part of the job hashtag that, that goes along with it. I guess what I'm not quite getting yet is how, how this can be a brand that is. Is going to cut through particularly, we, we have a lot of, I, I know from my own trade union and others. That there's, there's, there's a lot of work gone into this from a, a trade union perspective. And I'm just wondering how we can take that on board and take that along with us as well. Because I just wonder, maybe address this to the Chair as well, if there's, we just need a bit more of a conversation around this. Because I'm, I, I, I get the, I get the, 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 the logo and so on. But you know, the colours are important as well, it's, it's purple, I guess that's. There's a lot of words on some of them that which I, you know, I wasn't able to see. But I, I wasn't entirely convinced about the number of words. And I, it was just to, you know, I just wasn't a hundred percent on board if I'm being, being perfectly frank. About the, about the whole package that we have in front of us about adopting the, the proposal and so on. And I just think there's maybe a little bit more, you know, thinking about the, the different parts of certainly from. Our, our, our organisation, how, how we're going to do this. Because are the police the right people to, 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 and coming on to the things that, that we're, we're looking at? You know, having that conversation, I think would be useful to go back and maybe have it with our own organisations. And then maybe come together again and, 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 and sign off on what the recommendations are. So it's not to, it's not to say no, it's just, I guess it was something a bit, a bit new for, for, for me. And I just, I'm not sure about the other elements of council departments and so on. To just sign up to this today as, as something that we want to do. I, I'm not a hundred percent convinced today, but, but, but get the pitch that's been made.
If I can maybe come in there councillor McDonald. It's obviously we saw the, the management boards a minute earlier. And, and that there was a, a very interesting suggestion came forward from them. And I, and I just wonder if there's someone who can maybe take us through how that decision was arrived at. And, and I think Gail's maybe going to do that because there was some discussion in and around the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. Maybe taking a lead on this and I think that was an interesting suggestion. So maybe, maybe we can just explore that for a few minutes and we can decide where we actually want to go. Because I think the recommendations are a bit unusual for what we normally have. And it would maybe just shed some light, thanks.
Thanks Chair. Yeah, I feel a bit bad now, Chair's, Chair's sitting there. But that's what happens when you miss the meeting. Davy Howson, obviously from the police and myself, had a discussion through the management group just round about. If it would be helpful if it wasn't the police that were seen to be front and centre. If it was seen to be wider than just a police issue. So our other, our, our other man in uniform was mentioned. I don't know, Chair, if that's something that you, that you'd be keen to take on. I just think it's a positive message to sort of use it as somebody other than just somebody in the police.
Yeah, I see Chair's got his hand up there and I'll, I'll come at Chair just in a second. But just, can I just address councillor McDonald's points as well or, or observations or concerns? I think we've obviously had a lived experience of this pledge from a policing perspective for a couple of years. And, and as of last year, we started to push out and as, as, as been discussed by my colleagues and other sectors. Recognising that it isn't just the police that, that face violence abuse on a, on a daily basis. So the, the rationale that's coming today is for all the partner agencies. That have frontline staff who are impacted by abuse on a daily basis in, in, in all its forms. And looking at the experiences that police have had over the past two years, using us as a, as, as, I wouldn't say subject expert. But ones who've, who've come through this journey over a couple of years and had a campaign. That's not to say that we take those slides in their entirety and that's it, that's what you need to do. I see a more bespoke model for Aberdeen and the partners in Aberdeen and personalising that message how it comes out here. But we've got experiences that we would want to share and, and, and shape and, and, and allow learning to be taken from. But you know, the simple act of for, for myself is the, the powerful image of a police officer standing beside a teacher, standing beside. You know, reception staff at some council offices or social worker or a community warden. As a group of standing together and, and not accepting violence against staff. Also it's targeting bystanders and for them not to accept it either. Because you know, you know, educating bystanders' actions in terms of when they see members of authority. Whether they are a teacher, whether they are an ambulance paramedic, a doctor or nurse. You know, society not accepting that as, as behaviour and trying to adjust the culture. Because there does seem to be a, a culture whereby everybody will question everything and that, there's, there's absolutely a place for that. But when it steps beyond questioning and to the point of violence, whether it be physical. Or, or verbal violence, it's, it's unacceptable. And I think everybody in, in all frontline services would agree that that isn't acceptable and we've all got a part to play. And I think the point made by Chief Inspector Sturton and colleagues was that as leaders, it's a powerful message for ourselves to show an absolute pledge. Towards this, we all think it's the absolute right thing to do. How we actually deliver that in, in an Aberdeen city perspective is, is an, an open book for ourselves. But we've got experiences from the police that we would want to share. And I, and I guess it is unique in the sense that we're, we're, we're coming to this to say that this has worked for us. Our staff appreciate the, the chief constable's pledge. And recognise that we, we are putting our staff's safety at the forefront and making it socially unacceptable to abuse police officers. And I, and I guess what we're trying to do is trying to push that experiences out to other sectors so that we can be joined up in this and have a. Have a unified message. We just feel that if it's Chief Inspector Sturton or myself or a police uniform. It gets confused with just a continuation of the police campaign. Whereas actually what we're trying to do is recognising that it's not just the police that, that face this.
Thank you very much for that. I think that's really helpful. Chair, do you want to come back in? Thanks.
Yes, thank you Chair. I think first of all, definitely got the strategic support for, for the pledge within the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service. And we've signed up to a pledge already in, in Ayrshire as an example. So with regards to the recommendations, certainly got the, the support from the Scottish Fire and Rescue Service for that. You certainly got my support for being part of that, that working group with the communication. And likewise the off table discussions with regards to the considerations about who the potential lead agency will be. So you know, I've got lined up meetings with my colleagues in other areas within the service. And I've been in contact with Police Scotland over the last couple of days. So certainly just confirmation that we're more than happy to be part of that and that off table discussion about how we take it forward.
Thank you very much for that. I'm looking around the room and obviously there's a number of other partner organisations. So I realise some of you may want to take that away and come back in and feed. But we've got four elected members in the room. So I think probably speaking for us all, we would all wish to support this going forward. Hate that phrase going forward, but there you go. But what I would suggest is perhaps if we could have two volunteers from the, the group of four. And I'm, I'm looking at councillor McDonald and councillor Radley flicking up their hands there. And I know councillor Greg was also flipping up his hands. So maybe if we could offline agree, a couple of us to actually represent the elected members on the board. To see that, you know, we are putting in our share and, and trying to help here. How does that sound? Looking around the room.
I don't, I don't want anybody daunted by the lead on this, you know, from a policing perspective, we've got this. And we're more than happy to kick things off and take things to a place that maybe come point the, 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 the public lead happens at a later stage. And, and we get the group up and running, we're, we're more than happy to do that. What we were just concerned about this is just a continuation of the police pledge. An actual fact is trying to go beyond that and the police being a, a, a partner in that. But I, I do understand, you know, when we present this today, you know, suddenly thinking right away, I mean, this is going to be a bit of work list to get up and running and the police are going to step back. We were more than happy. Nods from across the table, thank you. And we're more than happy to, you know, to, to, to be that lead to start with, to get the group up and running, to understand, you know, where we need to go. What our comms strategy is going to be of a group and even potentially, you know, you know, diarise how we are going to use some messaging. So that as partners, that we're not speaking over the top of each other to, you know, get that important messages out about the pledge to our people.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's a really good idea. Luanne, you're wanting to come in and maybe you can comment a little bit about, and maybe, I don't know if you need to go back and speak with colleagues, but there you go.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, the Health and Social Care Partnership will be keen to be involved and, and get involved in the, in the working group. I suppose where I'm coming from is if we're really, if this is about trying to change public behaviour. So it's not just about making staff feel safe, but actually influence behaviour. I'm wondering if we can join this up with other agendas like our tackling stigma work that we're already doing through the ADP. And actually bring together the communities where, of the people that are likely to be causing the hassle to police. And actually understand things from different perspectives. And that might be quite impactful for, for people who present in a really challenging way. People that have been trauma and experienced, people who have experienced stigma. So there's maybe just different angles to come at this, rather than just seeing it as the social media thing.
Robert, you want to come back on that, I see you.
Yeah, thanks Chair. I think that's a really interesting point. I think the real challenge of this, and it kind of comes back to councillor McDonald's point, is how do you change attitudes and behaviours? Because internally we get our message right pretty, pretty much most of the time. It's unacceptable to see this type of behaviour towards staff and we can internally provide that support. But how are you going to stop someone from making that decision? Which is essentially the point that you're, you're, you're making there. So it is really tough, I think, as the Chief Superintendent mentioned. It's about how you make it socially unacceptable. And, and that is the really tricky thing to try and, to try and get around. And I think linking it to other campaigns around about hate, stigma and a variety of other things is, is certainly something that we've already considered. And I know that Colin's done work in other parts of the country along with colleagues in relation to the domestic abuse space and other areas. So I think those key linkages are very important. But, but to the Chief Super's point, I think this is about getting things kicked off, starting those conversations. Coming back to that point I was making about no one has exclusivity around about the good ideas. And then taking all these sort of collective ideas and solutions that we're potentially coming up with. And trying to create a bespoke product to the local area. Because I think there's a real opportunity for us here to take it to a different level than has actually happened elsewhere in the country. With the support of partners around the table.
Thank you very much for that, Robert. I, I can but agree with you. I was going to suggest is, is a way forward and, and please come back at me if MB's got a better idea. But obviously we've got apologies from a, a number of organisations, our partner organisations with us. So I just wonder if we want to agree that we want to support this, move it forward. And for the partner groups who. And for the partner groups who haven't been able to contribute today, to give them a chance to put someone forward um to join the group and take it from there. And we can then start looking at diaries and how we progress this and how we progress the messaging, et cetera. Because um, you know, I do think the messaging and, you know, is is councillor McDonald pointed out, things like colour schemes can be really important in how well these things actually do uh come across. So um I don't know if you, Alistair, you're in a position to commit to this today, or if you want to come back later, but I'm I'm aware that, you know, we obviously have a a couple of organisations that I think might be interested in coming forward. Uh, and it would give them a chance to actually catch up uh and hit the ground running with the rest of the team that we're trying to put together. I got a thumbs up there, so that must be an agreed. Thank you. Um, okay, if we can then move forward to item three point two. Thank you very much, gentlemen. I think that's hopefully going to go head in the right direction. The Aberdeen Health Determinants Research Collaborative update, and we have Shantini Paran Jothi. And I apologise if I have pronounced your name in any way incorrectly. Thank you.
That's fine. Pronounced it perfectly. That's great. Um, so thank you for the opportunity to um update on uh how we're getting on with the Aberdeen Health Determinants Research Collaborative. You'd have heard from a previous update that we've officially started on the first of October. So we're in the six month um setup phase at the moment. And a lot of our activity has been around engaging with stakeholders. So we've been doing the rounds um with community planning Aberdeen, so the management group, um the board, and also going to the city's Community Planning Outcome Improvement Group meetings. And really, the purpose of all of this is to um raise awareness of the H D R C and also start the discussion to identify areas where the work we do in the H D R C can start to support decision making. And that will then feed into our work plan and our um priorities. Um, at the moment, we don't yet have uh any staff, so we're not able to move things forward yet, but we're in a phase of recruitment. So we've got a number of posts out to advert at the moment, um which will close towards mid March. Um, and so once we've got um staffing in place, then we're hoping to see more progress against our work plan. Um, however, we are starting to do some work, uh, you know, in those areas that we identified as priority areas linked to the outcome improvement plans and everything. So we're starting to do some evidence reviews around fuel poverty, infant food security, and also some data work looking at chi seeding, some of the data sets that the council have. And that just means where there are identifiers, um looking to see whether we can get the chi numbers in, which will then help with data linkage with health data sets and so on, which will start to address some of the data issues that you talked about earlier um in this meeting. Uh, we've also got a structure in place for our governance and the steering group meetings and management group meetings that we said we would um do as part of our bid. Um, they're all in progress, and we've got dates in the diary to commence those. I think that's all I was going to say by way of an update, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much for that. Questions? Councillor McDonald, thank you.
It's a mouthful, that. Um, H D R C and and and, you know, even the word health determinants, I had to stop and think, you know, what what does that mean? And I just, I just wondered if there was a bit more kind of people friendly way of um, um, you know, um, the the project. I I recognise the kind of academic um research and and so on a aspect of it. But I I I just wondered if if it could be made just a little bit more accessible somehow. Or depends, I guess, who the the audience is for the the work.
Um, yeah, no, you're right. Um, so part of our work plan involves a lot of community engagement and so on. So we've got uh an engagement um opportunity coming up. And I think some of that is working with our public partners to, you know, look at what the people facing side of it might look like. And I I can't promise, but they might well come up with a different name.
I I I think anything that has um smaller acronyms is always helpful, because I must admit, we have so many. I can't remember what they're all for, to be quite honest. There you go. Um, any other questions? Oh, yeah, I'm not seeing any hands. We're asked to simply note the the contents of the report. Can we agree? Thank you. And okay, I've been asked by Mr McGowan if we can actually come to him last, and if we can go to three point four, uh, the refreshed Child Poverty Action Plan twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six. And we have Paul Tyler uh from A C C to present the report. Paul, over to you. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Um, the paper describes or presents the refreshed the Child Poverty Action Plan. This was revised the in line with the refreshed Scottish Government guidance that was issued late last year. This uh includes a focus on the six priority groups, families identified as being most at risk. Um, and the begins to build a picture in terms of baseline and the data to help us focus on actions and and priorities within those six groups. As Mr Simpson mentioned earlier on, uh, the work on the refreshed Children's Services Plan is ongoing. And there is work um to integrate the Child Poverty Action Plan within the Children's Services Plan to ensure that the actions and action areas are are aligned. That was a point that was fed back when the uh the plan was presented to the C P A management group. Um, that question had come up, so that work is in hand. Um, there was a couple of other suggestions or feedback from the management group to make more explicit links with the L O I P. That's a feature that will come through on the the integration with the Children's Services Plan. And also to to explore action with employers on improving child and family friendly policies and the job opportunities. Happy to take any questions on the on the report.
Thank you very much for that. Any questions? And oh, Luann, thank you.
Um, thanks. I suppose I was thinking about um young carers and some other groups that are not listed as the priority areas. And just wanted to get a bit of assurance that we're not solely focusing on the on the the groups that are mentioned. But there is work to sort of make sure no one is left behind, really. Thanks.
Uh, thanks, Luann. Thanks, Chair. Um, yes, I mean, the the there are six priority groups identified, which are expected to be the focus of activity, but the those work takes place across all groups that would be affected by by poverty and child poverty. So so it will include the include everyone.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm not seeing any more hands. So can we agree the recommendations on page one nine four? Thank you very much. And that takes us to our last report, which is three point three, the cost of living Aberdeen. And we have Mr McGowan to present. Thank you.
Thanks, Chair. Um, and thanks for taking Mr Tyler ahead of me. Um, appreciate that. Um, this is the report here, and hopefully you've all had a chance to have a look at, setting out some of the ongoing cost of living pressures in the city. And there's also some slides to be, yeah, there they are on the screen now. So what I'll do is I'll talk through the slides, hopefully you've had a chance to look at uh the report before um today. Um, we'll work through this. Um, and then at the end of that, there's some areas, I think there might be some gaps that I'd like to raise just for for discussion um and for noting with the group. So if you could move on, please, go go. And so the slides here um just set out a range of financial and economic information just to highlight. Some of you will have probably seen versions of this before. Um, so this one looks at inflation, and it just demonstrates quite clearly um where we are. This is September twenty two data. Um, but you can see um the the increase that's been there after historic lows. And and obviously, that's a few months ago, but the the situation remains the same. I think down slightly today, announced to ten point one percent, but um very marginal calls. Next slide, please, go go. And again, um representative of their interest uh rates.